We need to recognize a community member who's given back to New Market for many years through an official proclamation. So I will read it and then present it to the recipient and give him an opportunity to speak. "The town of New Market, New Hampshire by the New Market Town Council. Proclamation for Santa Claus, Elmer Bucky Bailey. Whereas after 28 years, New Market Santa Claus, Elmer Bucky Bailey, has called it quits. And whereas, one reason for his retiring is the fact that Grant Road traffic has grown terrifically and could make it hazardous for visitors, even with the benefit of traffic elves. And whereas, another reason for his retiring is the fact that he turns 70 in February and is tired. So are some of Santa's elves."[47.39][47.39](laughter) Whereas, actual visits with Santa started in 1976. The tradition grew by word of mouth progressively, attracting more people, but not growing too big. And whereas, the most that came over an eight-hour period, two weekends before Christmas, was 350 visitors. Now therefore, please join the New Market Town Council in congratulating New Market's own Santa Claus, Elmer Bucky Bailey, for a job well done."[77.06][77.06](applause) Now, you all were a little anxious to applaud him because there's one more little line, which is great. Shows the value that people had. "Santa Claus will be missed by all the little ones of New Market and their parents, who over the years stopped at 21 Grant Road, sit in the one-horse sleigh to tell Santa what they wanted for Christmas. Given at New Market Town Council chambers in New Market, New Hampshire, this 20th day of April in the year of our Lord 2005." Also, of course, we want to recognize Mrs. Claus for her contributions as well.[126.53][126.53](laughter)[127.53][127.53](applause)
Thank you very, very much. Thank you very much.
If you -- this microphone works if you want to say anything?
Well, I think that this might be the most pleasant item on your agenda tonight.[149.51][149.51](laughter) And it's one that I know that everyone here who has attended any of our sessions on Grant Road, over the 28 years, really enjoyed it. I know I did. It was a labor of love. And if you don't believe it, 43 elves went through that whole system in 28 years. One was a town councilor here in New Market, Dick Wilson. Seventeen years Dick was with me. And of course, the reason he left is he moved, or he'd still be with us. Dave Moore, over 20 years. My son, over 20 years. But the primary reason for this is my wife. Without her, this never would have gotten off the ground. She was the glue to the whole project. All the elves were outfitted with costumes that she had made, making sure that everything was in order so that we could go out there and do a realistic job. We've heard so many times, "You are the real Santa. We've been to the mall. They don't give us any time. We have to pay $5 for a picture." Just everything like that. And it's been great. Let's see, we saw over, I think it's, the actual number is something like 7,000, 7,009 children in that period of time. Along with a child comes a mother or a father, a grandmother and grandfather, and have their pictures taken around the sleigh. And it's something that they'll have the rest of their lives. It's been an absolutely great project, and I thank my elves because without them, it could never have happened. We did not have any accidents, no mishaps, nothing. And as you know, like it says, Grant Road has grown really fantastic. And the liability today, no, we don't need it. And I appreciate your leaving us alone in that 28 years and not suggesting that we, well, maybe you can move it to the high school, but once again, not on town property, you know? We don't want anyone to get hurt. But it has. It's been very, very nice, and we've enjoyed every bit of it. One more thing. We kept records for about five years, starting in 99 through 2003, just to see how many communities would be represented. Forty-one communities in the state of New Hampshire, people came to see Santa, whether they were visiting the area or not. One I remember well, years ago, came from India. And she stood in the foot of snow in open-toed shoes, watching her daughter with Santa, it was just like this. And someone had asked me, "What is your most memorable moment?" Well, they're all memorable, but there's one that is very touching to me, and I can't tell you what I said. But when the little boy looks in my eyes, and his mother is standing here, and he says, "Santa, can you bring my daddy home?" That's tough. She's looking around. Another boy on his bicycle rides by till everyone's gone. And when they've left, he comes to sit with Santa. He's 13 years old. "Santa, I got a problem. My mother's sick. My father's not home. We're not going to have a very good Christmas, I can tell." And so we talk about that for 15 minutes. And when he leaves, he's pretty happy. But these are the things that, "No, I want a doll, and I want..." No. These are the real things that do happen in a lot of different cases. The boy who stands in front in sign language talks with his sister because she can't speak to tell me what she wants for Christmas. So I thank you ever so much for recognizing me. And most of all, all my elves, there's some here tonight. Bob Coffey is my traffic elf.[378.13][378.13](laughter) And Bob Small's here. Tina Russell is also one of my elves. So it's been a lot of fun, and I want to thank you again very, very much.
Thank you.
I'll leave this room.[391.13][391.13](applause)
We'll be giving it back to him. We just want to get the last signature.[402.66][402.66](laughter) Looks a little funny to take something back from Santa Claus. Well, thank you. That's much more remarkable than I even realized, so it's wonderful what you've done. Yep. Sure.
Can I say one other thing?
Sure.
You know, our two kids saw their first Santa Claus, Bucky, and our grandkids saw their first. And I'm sure there's a lot, and there might even be a third generation in there someplace.
Could be.
Certainly done a great job.
Thank you very much.
And deserve it.
Thanks.
One other note before we proceed with the rest of the agenda. The town administrator shared this with me, and it's some sad news of a passing of a former New Market resident, A. Dixon Smith, who last year moved to Langdon Place in Keene and passed away this past Monday. And I did not know him, but he was very connected to New Market through the masons, through activities in town government. He was a contributor to a lot of different activities of the town and supporter. And so I just want to recognize his passing and condolences to his family and to his friends. The next agenda item is discussion with the Veterans Memorial Trust Committee regarding dedicating the Route 108 Lamprey River Bridge. And I know Ms. Rosa's here. Janice? Okay, there you are. And I thought, I don't know if there's anything. Whenever you're ready, Janice.
Pretty hard to follow Mr. and Mrs. Claus, but a couple of weeks ago, I came. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Hi.
Can you hear me back there, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay. A couple of weeks ago, I came in front of the board informing you of the Veterans Memorial Trust Committee's desire to have the bridge dedicated in memory, to honor all our veterans of the New Market community. And I don't know if you need another copy of what I passed out or not.
I don't think so.
Okay. What we're asking is for your support in having the bridge dedicated. In order for us to move forward and gather all the information -- that echoes, guys. There's something wrong with your mics. In order for us to go forward, we would like to have the support of the committee. Senator Maggie Hassan had informed us that it would make her position easier to have the bill passed the first time around if we came in with support from the town boards, from the New Market citizens. And we would come back later with prices on signs if you want, where we're going to locate them. I have to deal with the state of New Hampshire when that time comes, because they have a review process you have to use with your signs. There's discussion if we put on the bridge, or maybe a potential landowner in town may let us put it up on the land instead of the bridge. We would not interfere anywhere with the view of the Lamprey River. I know that probably be a big concern for some people in the community, and we wouldn't do that. And we will have to deal with the town ordinances for the sign and also with the state. But what we're first asking is to gather your support for us to move forward. Because I've already put like two and a half weeks in dealing with the state, back and forth. And if I don't get support, I mean, if I don't get support from the council, we don't want to move ahead without support because we think it's a community effort, and it would be nice if we had your support.
Okay. I just have a couple of questions and then open up to the whole council. Is the legislation that Maggie, Senator Hassan, has put in this year or for next year?
No. It's too late for this year. It's just as well, because we have to do a lot of gathering of information.
Okay.
It would be for the year 2006 that she would introduce the bill.
Okay.
So this gives us time to gather the support signatures that we need to get the information back to you, if you need a public hearing on it from our committee, to get your advice and how you would like that handled.
Okay.
But it'll be for 2006. But we're starting now.
And do you have a proposed name?
That we're still working on. But it wouldn't be, number one, it would not be to dedicate any war. It is to honor the New Market veterans as a whole. Not all veterans in our community receive the stipend, because I believe there's rules and regulations for those stipends. But there are a lot of veterans in our community who have given their time to the military to serve our country, and this would serve, you know, to honor them as well.
Right. There are regulations regarding
Right.
... the official ability to have served any war.
Right. And it would be nice, we thought, too, if we, you know, if we had it somewhere at the beginning of town, like the bridge. And you can dedicate bridges, but it has to be sponsored by a representative or your senator. Now, we have three representatives in New Market that will be helping us. I sent emails to two, and she was going to contact the other, contact them also, because the more support you have up in the state, she says, the faster it can get to push it through. Because they go to committee to committee to committee if you don't have all the information. So we want to provide the information all at once. To let you know, the state rules and regulations are, they are not responsible for the installation, the cost, or the maintenance of the sign. We are not asking the town council for money for the sign. We'll have to come up with some fundraising ideas for that, for that and the installation. The maintenance, once it becomes part of the veterans committee inventory, then it is the responsibility of the town to maintain it. I don't think there'd be a lot of cost for maintenance, to be honest with you. But to let you know right up front, that is three things from the state that they make clear.
I think it's a great idea. I think it's probably the most cost-effective kind of way to do a memorial, so it has that advantage. But also, it recognizes veterans through a structure that's always going to be there. So it makes sense. Anybody else in the council have any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Counselor Glennon?
What other groups will you be soliciting information, not information, but support fund?
Support, everybody.[825.13][825.13](laughter) I've already gone to the school board. The school board has granted us support, and they are going to go forward. There's a list that I'm going through. The New Market Business Association, things, the Guardians Club, NCDC. I have all the list from the town administrator's secretary providing me a list of all the organizations which you can pull off the website. We have many, plus we want to hit some fraternal organizations like the Eagles, the Legions, the Polish Club. And then, another, can I ask another thing?
Yes, ma'am.
We're, this is new to me. I had never put a petition into the town for anything. And what Mrs. Maggie Hassan has asked is, she needs the support to come from certain boards. It would be nice. But then also from the citizens. I don't know the legality, if you can, as a committee from the, within the town structure, if we can put a petition out at locations to ask for people to sign it for support, or if that's not legal?
You can definitely do that.
Okay. We can assure, since we're an organization, if we could do that without approval.
There's a, always could do a, like a petition like that. The other option is, next May of 2006, because the legislature would still be in session, maybe this bill would pass, but you could have a non-binding referendum vote on the town ballot that says, "Shall the town of New Market endorse the proposed naming of the Lamprey River Bridge as the, to honor all veterans of New Market." Something like that.
Okay. That's a good idea.
And that, you know, I'm sure the people of New Market would support that, and that'd be the most direct way of getting the overall message of support from the town. I'm not sure if it would be necessary if you've gotten the town council and a lot of the committees, but if it, it'd be something to consider next year.
That's good to know. I didn't think of that. A little process. And Tina, we're going to be coming to you, too.[952.32][952.32](laughter)
Is there any other questions from the council? Would someone like to make a motion regarding?
Did anyone in the audience have a question?
Oh, sure.
I mean, there's some, I don't, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Someone, Counselor Glennon?
I'd like to make a motion that the council do drop the letter of support to the War Memorial Committee in naming the Lamprey River Bridge in memory of New Market service individuals, something like that.
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Caprioli, seconds. The motion, so the motion is to send a letter to the Veterans Memorial Trust Committee in support of renaming the Lamprey River Bridge in memory of New Market's veterans, I think was the way that she wrote it. So hopefully that's all right. Is there any discussion? All right. CNN, please call a roll.
Counselor Jerry Hamel?
Aye.
Counselor Caprioli?
Aye.
Counselor Morrison?
Aye.
Counselor Will Hamel?
Aye.
Counselor Glennon?
Aye.
Counselor Hart?
Aye.
Motion carries six oh.
Thank you, Janice.
Well, thank you very much.
I forgot to mention that Counselor Foster will be late. He'll be here by 8 o'clock. He has an athletic event with his family that he couldn't miss. The next agenda item is discussion of wastewater treatment facility digester repair modifications. I'll just remind the council that we received this packet from George Laney at the previous meeting, or right before the previous meeting. We also got a memo from him on March 1st regarding these matters. So, George, would you like to do a brief presentation, or Mr. Dixon?
No.
Okay.
The information I gave you a couple of weeks ago on the digester repairs, last year, 2004, March, we received an administrative order from EPA. And part of that was some short-term fixes to the wastewater treatment plant. And the first one on that agenda was the digester repairs to the gas mixing system. And during the last couple of months, we also had the cover failure with the bolts and materials. So I've incorporated all of that into this $97,000. We had the cover tested, and it's in good shape structurally to continue to use it.
How?
The thickness, it's normally, it's quarter inch thick when it's new, and it's only down a few thousandths.
Oh.
There could be some weaker places, but they didn't find any. They only did spot testing in 12 locations on each tank.
So that, just to, but while we're on it, I noticed in the report that one of the last sections indicates that a new cover would be 74 to 100 and...
Yeah, that was the price of a brand-new cover, and that's just for the steel.
So we don't...
We don't need that.
Okay.
We don't need that.
That's good. Okay.
So, once we got that information, we're now in a position to proceed forward in changing the mixing system. And I've gotten, I've obtained three quotes, which I have here. And the one that we're recommending is the Rotamix. What that system does, it mixes the sludge, plus it eliminates an existing grinder that we have that's 15 to 20 years old, and it eliminates an original 35-year-old mixer. So we can install that unit, eliminate two old pieces of equipment, because all that is incorporated. The mixing system we're proposing mixes the sludge, grinds it up, and does all that at once, plus it pumps it through the heat exchanger. So that was 29,000-something.
Yep, that's right.
And then with installation, I think I gave you a budget of 97,000?
Yeah, I think essentially, the budget was 40,000 for installation.
Yep.
Thank you.
And then we had a little contingency in there.
Plus the cost of the cover.
And that, that caused, this thing is part of the program. It has to be done this year between June of this year and December of this year. Then, once that's complete, we have to move on with some other deadlines, and we'll need some additional money then. Talking with the finance director, we have a little over 300,000 in available funds. I guess I'm just going to answer questions.
Well, the first page has the different options, and then inside, there's more detailed proposals from the companies, and actual, almost like actual estimates.
George, excuse me. What George has referred to in the scheduled events, this fits in well with the EPA administrative order we have for improvements that need to be done, and that we should be committed to, to work with EPA. It just so happened that the digester cover failed, and we weren't expecting that, but it, everything that delineated here meets the EPA administrative order for implementation.
The portion of the digester repair that failed is 14,400, and the remainder is for the upgrade of the mixing system.
Counselor Caprioli?
Yeah. George, what do we do when the digester is taken out of service?
That's, we have two digisters. We have a primary and a secondary.
Right.
We convert the secondary to the primary and divert the mixing system so that we heat the, heat the secondary digester at that time. We heat and mix the secondary.
So we fix...
So we can take one out of service.
So are we fixing the leak in the secondary one before we...
No, we're fixing that after. And we haven't obtained any pricing on that yet, because I can't see it happening this year. With this one being finished up in December, we're going to have to get it back online, make sure everything's operating, and then we're going to be into the cold weather, and we just can't take it down.
When you say it's developed a leak below the liquid level, what is...
It's a floating cover. The cover goes, and there's a sidewall that goes down into the liquid, similar to if you have a jar and you put it upside down, glass of water, you know, put a glass upside down in the water, you know, with water on it and tip it up. Well, it's a liquid seal, and that, that tank goes up and down. In the bottom perimeter of that tank, there's some failure, and gas is leaking out and bubbling out. And that's one of the corrections that we have to make. We're supposed to have this stuff done by the December of this year, but I'm sure EPA will be agreeable to let us do that next year.
So would, is the secondary digester in use now, or is that...
They're both used.
So if we give the secondary digester all the work, wouldn't that potentially make that work?
It's going to be a short term.
How long?
Six months.
It's going to be six months.
But we'll be starting out with no sludge, because we have to empty the total contents of the primary to fix it.
Okay.
And we have to empty that by de-watering the sludge and putting sludge to a drying bed.
Oh, so it'll be empty, and we'll be starting?
Yep.
Okay. And how far into the future will these repairs take us?
They will take us to the schedule that we've agreed on with EPA. It's 2012, '13 is when the town has to upgrade the existing plant entirely. Sludge, de-watering, and process.
With what you know coming down the pipe, is this something that's cost-effective in the sense that, are we just going to be trashing this in 2013?
The money we're spending on this is going to pay for itself over that period of time. Because we have a mechanical mixer in there that costs between $6,000 and $8,000 every two years to replace the cartridge, which is all blades, knives. So we'll be eliminating that particular item, eliminating another pump, so I think it's the best alternative.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Glennon?
George, is the $300,000 we have, is that money coming from user fees, or is that how that all works out?
Yeah, it's in a capital improvement program.
Okay. And my other question is, Counselor Caprioli answered it, was, are we building something now, or fixing something now down the road? We're going to end up by building a whole new facility, and...
We're fixing something now, and by, down the road, by 2013, we may have to replace that. That may not be used again at that time. But we have to deal with the future, which is right now and the next few years.
And what the EPA regulations will be?
They're not going to be as, they're going to be more stringent than they are today.
Well, I mean, the other thing is that we still have to do the, they still have to do the study of the estuary to figure out what the low level's going to be.
Right.
That's going to determine what kind of plant we have to build.
And what the capacity will be.
Right. Okay. So... It's still going to have a primary and a secondary digester on it, but it's going to have more stuff after that, and probably more advanced.
We may have a different form of sludge digestion and de-watering, and maybe some processed.
If we're going to be discharging to that so-called futuristic thing, will we also have to maintain a secondary backup system here in the town in case of something...
You mean if we did that, the regional?
Yeah, the regional thing?
No.
We don't know how that's going to play out. That's too far down the road.
It's not going to happen by 2013. Thank you, George. I don't see how it is to waste, very expensive. Minister Dixon?
I was just going to say, probably useless for me to say anything at this point in time, because you already covered it, Counselor Hart. You learned your lesson as well. Basically, we, we have no choice but to do this at this point in time, because we've got to treat our waste between now and 2012 and '13. Not only that, as Council Chairman pointed out from previous presentations, in our discussions with DES and EPA, we don't know, and they don't know, what we will need to implement to treat our water, because they've got to do a study of the estuary, which has never been done. And therefore, it's kind of a catch-22. It could be, we'll come to 2012, '13, we won't be able to build a new plant, because they haven't completed their studies. We don't know. But in the meantime, we have no choice but to have that digester operating. Thank you.
Counselor Caprioli?
One more question, George. Is this project for six months, how will that affect the neighbors? I mean, is it loud, is it inside? I mean, I might as well ask now, instead of be...
It's not going to be a real loud project, and it's, it'll be done during regular working hours.
Okay.
It could, it could be some odor problems, but we've never really had any odor complaints over the years, and we've taken the digester down several times, so...
It'll probably be the hottest day of the year when you have the odor problem.
Well, maybe.
That's also when the bacteria work the fastest, so that's what's good. So if we add a resolution at the next meeting to proceed with this, that would be an acceptable timeframe for a response?
Yeah. That would be great, because we could start de-watering, and that would give the contractor time to order materials and everything. It's going to take us months to get the tank empty.
Yep. It might be good for the next council to have a tour after the May elections, just so they can get to speed immediately on that.
We've invited people down several times, even the, even the budget committee.
Yep.
No one showed up, so.[1672.86][1672.86](laughter) We're willing to give a tour anytime.
It is a sewer plant, right?[1676.21][1676.21](laughter)
Wastewater treatment.
Anybody else have any questions?
I just had a...
Counselor Caprioli?
Do we already have a contractor? Is there already, or do we have bids?
Penter is the contractor we're going to use.
Okay.
We did get pricing. And also, it looks like the equipment only would be eligible for 20% state grant, possibly 30, but I think it'll be 20.
I'm working on the 30.
But, but we are eligible for that on equipment only.
Thank you, George.
Yep.
So if the council's acceptable, we'll have a official resolution to proceed with the recommended action at the next business meeting, so we can vote on it, have it laid out as a resolution?
Is that action to carry through to 2013, or just...
No, just for this repair.
Okay.
Repair and upgrade.
Okay.
Please make sure they get scheduled for the May business meeting. The next agenda item is continued discussion of ordinance 2005-04 Cemetery Trustees Committee. And I'll try to provide an update on where this is at and what's before you. After the last meeting and the feedback we got from the public and from the council, I took the liberty of reading the RSA again and copying essentially word for word from the RSA and putting it directly into the proposed ordinance for your review. So, what you got in the packet was two versions, one that doesn't show the changes and one that shows the changes. And then you got tonight, one with a minor change to the changed one, so. The one that was on your desk is the one that we should start the discussions with. And to explain the changes that were made, if you look at the one that shows the changes, the underlines and the crossouts on your packet, in your packet, it's the second one, on white paper with no border. So, in the packet, on my packet, it was, there's the pink sheet that says this item, then there's the resolution on the fancy border and then there's the ordinance without the fancy border. That's the one. On that one, the changes are, in the mission, you can see there was a change to municipal cemetery from public because municipal is the language used within the ordinance, I think the state law. And to maintain the public record for each burial site, private burial site in the town of New Market. That last sentence portion had a little confusion related to it, so it was suggested to drop that from the mission and to keep the mission focused on any municipal cemetery, which is what you have on the one that was at your desk. The rest of it has kept, been kept the same and the reference to the private burial site is in number one underneath Powers and Duties. And what that is saying is not that the committee has the responsibility or power to manage private burial sites or even that it has to keep track of all the interred people in them, but that if I owned a property with a private cemetery on it and I was keeping records and I gave the town a copy, the cemetery committee is responsible for maintaining that copy and providing it at a cost to people who want it. So, that's what the state law is saying and it's copied almost word for word into the powers and duties underneath number one. So, it says, just to make it clear, such records shall be kept of every private burial site within a municipality by the owner of the land containing the burial site. So, that means if I own the land, I had the responsibility to keep the records. And if I do and I provide a copy that to cemetery trustees, they have to maintain those municipal records for all the private burial lots and then I can give them out to people who requested them. Like if Wilford was doing historical research and wanted to know who was buried in my cemetery and the town had the copy, they could give it. That's all, that's the only responsibility this committee has in terms of private burial lots, is to help provide records of them when they have those records.
What if they don't keep?
If they don't have the records?
If they can buy a property that has a 200-year-old cemetery, are you responsible for keeping those records or is that sort of a-
It sounds like the owner has a responsibility for having the records, but doesn't have the responsibility to give them out to anybody. But if they give them to the town, then the committee and the town has to provide them and this committee has a responsibility for that. Yeah. So, then just to finish going through, the rest of it is almost word for word from the legislation, the state law. And then the only other thing, as I suggested, we added an actual subsection that says what the two municipal cemeteries in the town of New Market are and that's on the backside. And I don't know if those are the right names, but Riverside Cemetery on Elman Packers Falls and Old Town Cemetery on Gordon Avenue behind the police station.
Behind the hamlets, actually.
And then the minutes of the meeting just said that they'll be provided in electronic format versus in Word on a disc since nobody uses discs anymore, they send it email. So. Counselor Wilford Hamel?
No, I just wanted to know what Brian, the question Brian had, I didn't hear.
I think his question was about the landowner's responsibility if they owned a property with private burial grounds on it. And I said they really, pretty much it sounds like they don't have much responsibility except to maintain a record, but they don't have the obligation to give that record out. Counselor Glennon?
This section here, Brian, this is your wording, your interpretation?
No, it's almost word for word.
Word for word.
I might have changed like, like number one, I don't think it started with keep, but it might have had like a couple of words before that.
Okay.
Just to make it-
Does this have to go through legal or anything or?
We should have, if it's an ordinance, it should be reviewed by legal counsel, yes.
Yeah, okay, so right now it hasn't been?
No, but once, once, I think what we, if we get agreement, then we could send it to legal counsel, get their feedback and then do the public hearing again.
So, what you're looking for now is a motion?
Yeah, we had, with this, with, I think with the substantial revisions-
Yeah.
-which are really just clarification, we should probably have another public hearing and then interim sign it to legal counsel, so.
Okay, so at this point, there's no motion needed to-
If we did it, no, if we did a motion, it would be to send it to public hearing-
And legal review.
And legal review.
Okay, then I will make that motion and I also want to commend you on the great job you did here. Thank you. So, I will make that motion to send this to review by legal counsel and to get it to another public hearing.
Okay, Counselor Glennon makes a motion, Counselor Morrison seconds it to send the revised ordinance to legal counsel for review and to a public hearing. I'm sure there's more questions or comments, so if there are any, let's workshop it so when we get to the public hearing, we decide to vote on it or not, pass it or not.
I can ask a question again?
There's no obligation to.
No, I know.
Counselor Glennon, go ahead.
My only concern is, and you're right, we need to, you know, discuss this at this point and not have to at another level. I know there was some discussion earlier on and I don't want to open up a can of worms here, but there was some discussion about setting criterias for the cemetery committee. I would caution the council to look at that very closely because if we're going to start setting criterias for various committees and groups, then we're going to need to do that for criterias for planning board people, for council people, for any other committees or any elected officials or appointments that the council makes because you really can't do it to one and not do it across. I mean, I find, I'm not going to belittle the cemetery trustee committee because that's a very important job. And we've been fortunate, we've had one guy who's been doing it, Ed Pelzer. Now, if it switches over and moves into a committee type thing, that's even better. However, the council is an entity in itself that has a lot of responsibility, but yet there are no job criterias for that, nor are there any for planning board or school board member or anything else. So, I would say be cautious there because you may be setting a precedent.
I just want to clarify that I, the changes I made were not, I didn't take everybody's comments and try to address them, I just tried to make it clearer based on state law because it seems like this committee's responsibilities are pretty much ordained by state law.
Yeah.
I didn't want to-
Exactly.
-try to change them and then run into the problems of that. I'm just trying to get us in compliance with state law. If the council has other changes they want to make, we can discuss them and move on them tonight. This is just to get the ball rolling. Is there any other comments or questions about the provisions to this or other items that people would like to see included or not included? Counselor Morrison?
Do we have legal counsel? I mean, do we know what the liability is if this count, this committee doesn't execute its duties? I mean, is there any risk to the town because a whole bunch of bodies get lost or, it happens?
I would think so with the state RSA.
I mean, this is in Rhode Island, but.
Well, we could ask the question of legal counsel. If the committee does not exercise its responsibilities, then who do those responsibilities fall upon? That might be the best question.
I can answer that for you very quickly.
Okay.
It falls right back on the administration and the town council.
Yeah.
To make sure it's done. I have served in a community where they worked under a cemetery board of trustees for a number of years and the work became so overpowering for them that they bought the books into the town hall and said that they, you know, they were all getting older, had several obligations and could no longer keep up the workload.
You hadn't mentioned that before, yeah.
And in that particular case, they'd done a pretty good job except for the last year and we spent probably eight months replotting where people were, but it falls back on the town.
Counselor Wilford Hamel, then Counselor Jerry Hamel.
Oh, I just wanted to repeat, I want to hear Brian again.
Okay. All right. A couple of things just-
I don't know what the question was.
The question was, does the town have any increased liability if the cemetery trustees committee does not do its responsibilities and bad things happen to the cemetery or to people who were supposed to be interred in the cemetery? And my suggested, Al indicated that the responsibility would fall, well, you heard him say that, right? Okay. And I suggested that we also consider legal counsel input on that. Counselor Jerry Hamel?
Yeah, I guess I got some of the concerns that were just mentioned and I don't know, I really think that, you know, we're breaking something. If something's been working fine and we're breaking it, we have to, I guess, but how far, if something wasn't going smoothly with this committee, how far could it get? I mean, they're going to be in charge of expending monies and whatnot and I'm guessing because there's, there's a fund there. And how far can they get before we would be able to step in and say, hey, this isn't going right, you know, this isn't what we're expecting or something?
Well, the, the first year would probably be the biggest challenge and the biggest test and underneath the way the ordinance is written, there's three appointments, one for one year, one for a two-year, one for a three-year. So, next May, we could appoint the council or replace the, a council member to replace and do that. I think the other option is that the, it seems from, and I couldn't find it, that's what I was looking for, it seems that we do have the ability to put forth a charter amendment to designate the town council or the town administration as the trustees of cemeteries and therefore, the responsibility would be upon the staff and we would hire out somebody to do that or have a staff member do that. So, I think that's the way we could address it. I also think that if it wasn't just being done, we would be able to step in and do the, do the work we needed to. Counselor Glennon, I think you wanted to add to that.
Yeah.
And Minister Dixon?
In reference to Counselor Hamel, one of the ways that could be an oversight on that would be the committee actually is responsible to the council, even though it's a state RSA mandate, but it is answerable to the council. So, the council could go back and say, either on a quarterly basis or a monthly basis, a report from the committee to give us updates and, you know, any pitfalls that they may be running into. In addition to that, what I also wanted to, because I did a little research on this myself and just so that the public at large, anybody who would want to be a member of this committee, I know there's some concerns, not everybody, you know, is familiar with the cemetery laws and all that. The state does offer courses and in fact, there's one on Wednesday, May 4th, 2005, all trustees sessioned for cemeteries and is paid for by the state. So, once we have a committee, we can send them to these seminars and, you know, just get up to speed and, I mean, there's a learning curve and there's also educational tools out there that will, you know, help them do that. And this, it also says, you know, all the places, Concord, Conway, New Hampshire, there are different places where these are going to be held. It's usually for about four hours and what I was not able to find out was through Terry was, is there a certificate that they receive in the end, you know, saying that they completed the course? So, there are things out there to help them out. Okay?
Counselor Caprioli?
I noticed Mr. Pelzer is in the audience, I was wondering if I could ask him a question?
Sure.
Mr. Pelzer, I guess the best way to do this is that, how do you feel about this committee and you've provided service to the community for a very long time, keeping records and taking care of our cemeteries? And are you willing to assist in the transition if this were to come to fruition, I guess?
Mr. Pelzer, if you'd be willing to come to the podium, I-
I don't need to put you on the spot, but you're-
Well, you're dressed very well, so.
You'll do great on television.
Your name and what you-
Yes, New Market resident. Yes, I would put my name as a candidate for one of those positions. I think the only reason, I think the major reason why is that presently, I know how the cemetery is operated and I'm familiar with the selling of the graves and the deeds and marking of the graves and marking of cement foundations. And other than maybe my son, there's nobody else that's familiar with, with all the paperwork and how things are done. And in order to keep the records straight, I think you need that transition. So, certainly I would put my name in as a, as a candidate for one of those positions.
Feel better?
Yeah, that's fair reassuring because it will be a transition.
Correct. Basically, what we've done at the funeral home, as funeral directors have taken that particular hat as cemetery trustee or cemetery sexton, kind of had that unofficial, we've done the work without the title, so to speak, and we've done it in behalf of the town and we continue to do it. My only concern is that I've seen towns that have had cemetery trustees and as that town administrator said, I've seen the records because the trustees did not maintain the records, same graves getting sold twice, graves marked out in the wrong location due to basically lack of an experience. Because what normally happens on some of the boards is that some of the boards don't appoint a, what I call a sexton, who would actually be involved with that particular part of it. And one of the trustees of the three usually takes that upon himself and the other two, so to speak, don't get involved with it and when that person leaves, you're constantly moving people around and when you start moving people around, there's no continuity and you lose a lot of that experience and you don't, you don't, you don't see what's happening until all of a sudden you're neck deep in problems and I don't want somebody coming back, the town coming back to me and say, okay, here's all the books back, would you straighten them out?
That's what I want.
It's been an advantage for us at the funeral home by having us do that work because of the fact that when the family comes in, we can take them out to the cemetery right away and we can sell them the grave in behalf of the town of New Market and it saves extra time and extra effort on behalf of the family to meet somebody else at another time to go out to the cemetery. So, we can, we can do that. We can do it on weekends, we can do it on holidays, we can do it in the evening, whereas sometimes the trustees aren't available for, for those particular timeframes. Somebody goes away for a week, somebody's got to be available to mark the graves, to sell those lots and to do that. And just because of the business that we run, we're in that position and so it just kind of is wearing the same hat but doing somebody else's position. And the same thing goes for trustee of the trust funds because we're that, because we're trustees of the trust funds, we can collect the money and we can send it over to the company and we can do that trust fund paperwork that needs to be done. So, it's convenience for us, but it also helps the town out and also helps the families out that, that are looking to buy these graves for the town of New Market. The regards to the private graveyards that Counselor Morrison asked about, Mr. Kent, back in the mid-'70s compiled a complete record of all the private graveyards, all the known private graveyards in the town of New Market and that record is located at the New Market Town Library, another one is located at the Historical Society in the state of New Hampshire and that lists all the peoples buried in those cemeteries and it lists all the stones that were there and what the stones, how the stones were read. And so, that record has already been created and it is available for anybody. So, even if somebody owns a piece of land without a, and they don't know the information on the cemetery, there is a record of it at the town library right now. So, this, you know.
That's good to know. Thank you. Counselor Glennon, I'm not sure if you had a question?
Yeah, Ed, I'm assuming, and it's probably wrong, but you looked at the state RSA-
Right.
And I can only believe that you're already doing this probably.
Correct. I think what happened was back in the early '70s, I can remember when I started working at the funeral home with Roy, I can remember Roy going to, at that time, the three-member Board of Selectmen, asking them to establish rates or to change fees or to designate closing dates for the cemetery or opening dates for the cemetery. And at that time, I think the three-member Board of Selected, Selectmen had taken it upon themselves to appoint themselves as the cemetery trustees. And then, when we changed to the five-member board, that kind of got lost and then we went to the seven-member board and we changed town government and that just kind of lost, got lost over a period of time. And that's kind of why we're in a point where the RSA does say that if we were a selectmen that you could appoint yourselves and I, I don't know the legal interpretation, but I think, you know, you could appoint yourself as cemetery trustees and say, and the cemetery trustees would have the same power as, to say that, okay, we're going to appoint this person as a sexton of the cemetery and as sexton, you'll operate- cemetery, and as sexton, you'll operate the cemetery and answer to us on any questions.
Given the fact that you're already somewhat compliant to it, so basically, what we're doing, number two things, one, we're following the RSA, state mandate, number two, we're going to share that responsibility from a one individual to now three individuals.
Three individuals with responsibility, but for instance, our feeling always was that if we marked the grave in the wrong spot, that it was our responsibility, and we would pay for the mistake. That's never happened, we haven't had that, we haven't had that issue. Yeah, and we appreciate that. But I don't, but I don't look at that three-member board as saying, and regardless, and I don't care who's on the board, I don't look at that three-member board as saying, okay, this year, you're going to be, you're going to go out to the mark the graves, and next year, you're doing it, and next year, you're doing it. Because I don't think the experience is going to be there, I don't think the background's going to be there, and I think that's where you're going to end up with eventually getting into problems, because somebody's going to miss something, somebody's not going to annotate something on a map or a chart or the index card or the lot card, and somebody's going to sell the second grave, and that's, you know.
Well, I think that's where, at least, what some of the councils are saying, and I have to echo that same sentiment, is the feeling that if you're part of that board, I just can only think that things are going to just get better.
Well, yeah, I would hope, yeah, yeah, I would, yeah. At least maintain the, you know, hopefully, a status that nobody gets any problems, yeah. Yeah. Well, I'm interested in even for my own benefit and for the people that I'm going to serve, because it's going to help them out too.
So you don't see a problem working with a committee or?
No.
Okay, great.
I mean, it could be after the first year that, that the committee goes, whoo, let's just hire you, have you step off the committee, and you can be the sexton just like you are now. Because they still have the ability to do that, and we'll just budget for that, and then we'll appoint somebody new.
The program that's in Conked in May is a very good program that Terry Knowles puts on. I've attended it on a couple of different occasions, both as cemetery and both as, both for the trustees of the trust funds. No, you don't get a certificate at the end saying that.
You're completed the course or something.
Completed this course. It's kind of an information-type thing that lasts for three hours, I think, in the morning or an afternoon session, and it's more of a question and answer, and this is what the RSA says, and this is what you should do, and people kind of.
Out of curiosity, are you a member of any cemetery?
No.
Now, at this point?
No.
Okay. Just curious. I know there's quite a few of them, so.
Quite a few, yes. There are quite a few cemetery boards, and each one of them operates, well, each town, each city, each municipality will operate their cemetery a little different. They all have different regulations. Yes, you can get together as a group, and you can see what the other person's doing. I haven't done that simply because we work very closely to, with Newfields, we work closely with Lee, we work closely with Durham. I've got maps of all their cemeteries, I go to their cemetery sometimes to mark out graves for them or to help them out and answer their questions. And so I kind of feel that we've got some experience, and we know what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Pelzard.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Helen too.
All right, seeing none, please call the role on the motion to move this to legal council review and public hearing.
Counselor Jerry Hamel.
Aye.
Counselor Caprielli.
Aye.
Counselor Morrison.
Aye.
Counselor Will Hamel.
Aye.
Counselor Glennon.
Aye.
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Counselor Hart.
Aye.
Motion carried.
The next agenda item is parking, and it has three components: presentation of the parking committee report, review of demolition proposals for the Quanza Hut, and discussion of the old fire station and potential for parking. Jen, are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Jen Jarvis is the vice chair of the parking committee. Counselor Glennon and I sat on the committee as well with Nick Popoff, Rick Malaski, and Rod Bowles. And I asked Jen to present a summary of the report to the council, and she agreed to do that. And once she passes out the report to the public, we'll hear from Jen on an overview of the committee's work and recommendations.
Thank you for, Jennifer Jarvis, Seven Raymond Lane. Like Brian said, the Downtown Parking Evaluation and Site Committee started their work August 2004. The Downtown Parking Evaluation and Site Committee was formed by the town council through adoption of Resolution 2004-12 and charged with the following responsibilities. Before I go into the responsibilities, I just want to acknowledge the other members of the committee. Rod Bowles was appointed as a public appointee, Dana Glennon, town council representative, Brian Hart, town council representative and chairman, myself as the Newmarket Business Association representative, Rick Malaski, the director of Public Works, and Nick Popoff, Downtown Tax Increment Finance District representative. The committee started meeting in August of 2004. The committee had nine formal meetings since August and several informal meetings. The mission of the committee was, charged with the following responsibilities: to evaluate and report on the current number, location, and availability of both on-street and off-street public parking from the Lamprey River Bridge to Route 108 Autobody, including the portion of Route 152 from Riverworks to the current fire rescue station. Number two, evaluate the number of parking spaces on publicly-owned lots within a reasonable walking distance of downtown, and make recommendations on the potential use, duration of use, and cost for use on such lots. Number three, to evaluate and make recommendations on the potential locations for additional off-street parking. Number four, to consider the impact on future parking needs through the redevelopment of the Essex Mills complex on Main Street. Number five, to evaluate options to better utilize the existing on-street parking through meters, shorter duration parking limits, or increased patrol frequency. And number six was to evaluate and make recommendations on how to add off-street parking during Phase II construction. Just to note that our mission was to think in terms of the best possible locations for future parking without the initial consideration of cost. Therefore, this report does not identify costs for recommended actions. We were, we were charged with this mission because there's a general understanding that there's a lack of parking in the downtown area. When the committee first started getting going, we wanted to know if there were any other committees that had also researched this topic. We reviewed the 1995 parking survey by the University of New Hampshire Civil Engineering Senior Project. We also reviewed the Newmarket Tomorrow Committee Report from September 2000. And by viewing both of these reports, clearly, there was a parking shortage, but we weren't really sure what that exact shortage was. The 2005 Downtown Parking Evaluation and Site Committee examined the 1995 and 2000 reports and asked Clay Mitchell, the Newmarket Town Planner, to compare the existing properties and their uses with the town's current zoning to determine the number of parking spaces that would be required if such structures and uses were proposed today. The analysis evaluated all buildings located on Main Street from the intersection of Route 152A to the bridge just past the Newmarket Library. Private parking spaces on each property and public spaces within 100 feet of each property were counted. Parking was also estimated for residential and non-residential uses, as per the current use of the property. While such a study has limitations in the conclusions that can be drawn, due to, for example, the fact that many public spaces overlap within 100 feet of a given property, this rough analysis affirms the parking, affirms the public perception that downtown Newmarket has insufficient private and public parking for existing uses. For example, the core downtown buildings would require 246 parking spaces for non-residential uses and 120 parking spaces for residential uses. However, these same buildings only have 168 privately-owned spaces, leaving a shortage of nearly 200 parking spaces per town zoning, per town zoning ordinance. Clearly, there's a need for additional public parking to support the viable economic use of these buildings. While Clay was working on gathering this information for the committee, the committee wanted to do some research on their own. We took the tasks that we were given by the town council. Task one and two was to determine the number of current on-street and off-street parking. The committee evaluated the existing on-street and off-street parking in the study area and determined that there are currently 78 on-street parking, 78 on-street parking spaces available. All of these spaces are subject to a two-hour parking limit, however, enforcement is sporadic. The locations of these spaces is identified in the table below. We did receive a letter from Kevin Sears letting us know how often the police patrolled the area, which was not very frequently because they were not budgeted to do so, and they didn't have the manpower. Just to note out that the current plans accepted by the town council for Phase II of the downtown Main Street construction project will reduce the total number of on-street parking spaces by seven, which would make it 71 on-street parking spaces. This reduction, while slight, will only increase the merchants' and public's perception of the limited availability of parking in the downtown.
Jen, just to, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I realize, in looking at this, that the draft, the council has a draft in the packet, which doesn't make any sense, so.
They don't have the final copies, what you're saying.
We got the final copy originally, because it was separately distributed, so there's a couple of blank spots you might have noticed, like in the column, and those were filled out.
Blank spots in yours?
Yeah.
All right.
Well, then, it's a good thing I'm reading.
Because the final one had maps.
Yeah.
It had a part, and it had a lot more information, so, but we got the final one, just not in the packet, it came separately.
I haven't.
And it seems like there was an oversight on the staff part in copying this. Jen, maybe we could give Al a couple of minutes to try to make some copies of the full report, and then proceed with it, and in the interim, discuss the Quanza Hut proposal from Mr. Malaski.
Have the final report?
Yep.
How does this happen?
God. I didn't get maps. That is so weird.
But I knew everything was.
Yeah, see, there's maps, photos. Took me a couple of hours to do that finally worked, so it would be nice. I don't know.
But I did get that one first.
I think we got that one a couple of times, this one here, a couple of times.
I don't know.
And then we got the final draft.
Sorry about that, Jen.
Should we take a break or something?
No, we'll have Rick, if you can talk about the Quanza Huts and the proposals you got. Because that's, I think it's kind of independent of this, I mean, we directed the staff to get these quotes a while ago, so.
Did you guys get the memo about recommending Kitter?
Attached to three proposals. I didn't get one that recommended anything, no.
I have the Kitter building and wreckage, is that the one?
Yeah.
There's a one-page memo from you on March 14th that says, attached are three proposals for demolition.
Yeah, there was another one too, you didn't, okay.
Do you have a, so what we have before us is three proposals from three different companies.
Yeah.
Are there any other ones?
This is it.
Okay.
Oh, so there's only three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty-nine, four fifty, the twenty-nine, nine, and twenty-one.
Twenty-nine, yeah.
That came in my head.
And twenty-one, and twenty-nine, yeah.
I'm suggesting that we go with Kitter wrecking.
Okay.
And I want?
Hold on, hold on.
They're in the middle.
Twenty-nine.
They have a good reputation.
Yeah, okay.
The one for twenty-one, if you notice on the quotes, there's some stuff missing that I questioned and didn't get real warm and fuzzy answers on, so.
It doesn't say where it's going.
Yeah.
That does look strange.
Doesn't say anything about being disposed of in an approved site and things like that. And it did ask some questions on that, and didn't really get a clear answer, so I just had a little bit of concerns, that's all. So that's, Kitter's the next cheapest one.
So with this particular proposal, just so I can better, I make sure I understand, after it's done, when I drive by the parking lot area, what it's going to look like?
You're going to still see the foundation.
So, right now, it's, is it a cement wall?
It's.
Or is it cement?
It goes up, stone, concrete foundation, and then it has the cinder block for a certain level.
So there'll still be about six feet of height?
The cinder blocks are probably going to crumble and come down when they take the building down, but you'll still have that, probably six foot or so, seven foot, from the parking lot side. On the other side, it'll be pretty level with the ground.
How do you cover that?
On the Polish club side.
And then, in terms of the cement floor of the building, that'll still be there?
That'll still be there, yeah.
And then, if we wanted to go to the next step and, you know, level the surface for our surface parking lot, and then potentially make it available for a garage or some structure or something like that in the future, what kind of work is that involved, and is that something the staff can do, or do we need to hire that?
We'd have to get a hammer in there. We could, we'd have to hire the hammer, that would be the biggest piece of equipment. It's like two fifty an hour, I think, for the hammer.
And how many days do you think it would take?
I think it would take a couple of weeks to probably break that up. And there is ledge.
In this area up here, we did some test pits a couple of years ago.
Yeah, for the, when you did the parking lot.
Somewhere, there's going to be a transition of some sort, because this is a lot lower than the existing municipal lot, but up in here, there's some ledge, and I don't know if it comes around like this or not, it could.
All right.
But it would be level up to a point, I mean, you might have to do something when, when the two parking lots in the building meet.
The propane tanks, there's three right there?
Yeah.
Are they going to be removed?
Yeah.
Or taken back by, are they owned by the, do we own them, or are they still being, are they leased out by the company that provided the propane?
That would have to be checked on. I don't know if the company owns them or if they went with the property. Normally, it's the gas companies.
Owns them.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Yeah.
Counselor Glennon?
That concrete floor, I don't know how deep it is, but that wouldn't be filled over and put parking on top of that?
No, we'd probably have to break it off.
Does that create a problem if they want to, see, I'm just thinking, there might be a good footing for a future parking.
If they were doing a parking structure, they're going to, they're going to be putting footings in and column bars and significant engineering to, going into the bedrock, so.
The only other question I have is, when you, when it comes down on that area that still has a, the foundation is still up, what are we going to do to protect that, as far as people going there? I mean, I'm concerned about the liability to the town or something.
Well, we'd put Jersey barriers across. Once the building was gone, we can put Jersey barricades across the driveway, so no one could drive up in there.
Okay, so if they go beyond that, it's their responsibility.
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to get in because it's all fenced off on this, on the Polish club side. There's a fence, so we would just have to do the driveway entrance on Spring Street.
Right, but that fence is only, like, not a stockade, but what do you call that? It's wood, isn't it?
Yeah.
Where you can just crawl underneath.
Oh, I thought you meant like vehicles and things.
Well, no, I really didn't, that's a good point, because when you said you had to block off that driveway with Jersey barriers, yeah.
That's what I misunderstood.
And then I'm thinking more of people, you know, just wandering in there, taking a look.
There wouldn't be a big hole or anything.
No.
There would be a drop-off to the other parking lot.
Yeah. How high do you think that would be?
I want to estimate it like six feet.
Yeah.
Once you bring the cinder block down to the existing slab.
But we have a six-foot drop right now. If you go towards the mural is on the Elm Street lot.
Yeah, there's a pretty good drop there.
If you, if you were in that parking lot and climbed the wall and fell off, you'd be falling the same height.
Okay, thank you.
We could put up no trespassing signs until something happens or something, you know, just to cover us.
Good point.
Until something happens, then we take it down?
To protect.
Till the foundation was gone.
Till we get the rest of it, yeah.
Counselor Foster?
Rick, these quotes, it says salvage rights going to the company, so this is the price?
With them getting the metal.
They take the steel, they take everything.
Yeah. Yeah. And we have to do the all-hazardous removals, which we're in the process of getting taken care of.
The asbestos has been removed.
Yeah.
Counselor Morrison?
Are we still going to try and salvage I-beams out of that for a sand shed?
No.
Wasn't, weren't we talking, does this work?
Yes.
Oh, good. Weren't we talking about salvaging some of that steel for a project in town?
Yeah, it was a suggestion of the town administrator that we consider keeping some of them for, maybe you weren't here that night, but I don't know if it was a salt shed as much as like an amphitheater or some kind of.
It all needs to go, Brian.
Oh, no, it just came up, it came up in conversation, so we're not doing that anymore?
We could decide to, but I think Rick's recommendation is that he doesn't want to store that.
Let Kitter have it all.
The price would go up if they took, if we kept any of the steel.
Oh, yeah, because he's figuring, actually, just to give you an idea, when he first figured his quote, he didn't realize it was trying to get the steel, and he also figured in taking out the foundation, but it was like seven. Oh, yeah, because he's figuring, actually, just to give you an idea, when he first figured his quote, he didn't realize it was trying to get the steel, and he also figured in taking out the foundation, but it was like seventy-six thousand. So, it was a pretty good difference in price.
If we wanted to proceed and, so we'd say we hired one of these companies to do the removal of the building, would the staff have time this summer in their schedule to do the work to clean out the rest of the site?
The foundation and stuff? Be very late summer, like September.
Okay.
And it all depends what happens with ball fields, too. I have been hearing some talk that we might start doing something out there later in the year or something.
With which ones?
The new ones.
I guess depends on the LW.
It might be wishful thinking, I don't know, you know, that's just...
That sounds somewhat aggressive, but I know that it would be great to get some work going on that.
Yeah.
This year.
So, I'm just, I didn't know if that, I'd just been hearing some talk. That, that would be the only thing, if they expect us to get in there, that's all.
Okay.
Don't forget my heartbreak guide.
Anybody else have any questions regarding the work on the Quonset hut area, the Rockingham Shoe Building?
When's it going to start?
Well, how long would it be from when we made a decision?
As soon as the hazardous removal's done, these guys are, they were hoping to start, they'd like to know, they're looking to know so they can put it in their schedule, but like it, end of May.
Is that reasonable?
Do you mean, in terms of when they want to start, or make a decision?
I mean, all we have to do is give the okay to do it, right?
Yep.
We can't do that at this meeting, but we can do it at the business meeting, or?
I think we could do it at the business meeting just as a resolution, because we have to tell where the money's going to come from. But I mean, if we move it to the, if we move it to the business meeting, I'm pretty confident that the council will decide to do it, so you could tell them, you know, put it on your schedule.
I thought some of that money was coming from the insurance.
Well, we got an insurance settlement, it's independent of, of actually knocking the building down. They assumed they were willing to offer something if we were going to use the building to replace it, but without replacing it, we got a lower value.
Lower amount, but was it somewhere around the two-hundred-and-nine thousand or something?
Yeah, we got that money.
So, that money, then, if we use that money, then we're just looking for the additional cost, say about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars?
I can get a, between now and your business meeting, I'll, I'll try to find out what it would cost to have a hammer break up that foundation, because that's really the only thing we'd have to hire.
Great, yeah.
And then we could...
When they start to finish, what's that timeline? Thank you.
A week.
Yeah.
A week, two weeks most.
He said this would take about four days to get it down, is what he's said.
Get it down, the cleaning it out is different.
Well, he, no, he meant down and going, yeah, I don't, it's going to be interesting to see.
I saw Danley Demolition do the church in Exeter that burnt, and pretty fast. And they buried all the granite so they could reuse it for the building.
So, that was the reason why I couldn't reach you that day.
So, you guys agree with Kidder?
Well, I think, before you do, I got a proposal, too.
I think we're going to hear the Gerder idea.
No, not, not as yet. Basically, Air Quality Experts, the same people that are removing the asbestos, works with a removal team, and they just provided me a quote of taking the building down to base grade at twenty-one-five, they would be in there approximately five days. They also included in their quote, removing the slab, foundation walls, footings, and sloping for safety, a price of thirty-one thousand dollars.
Total?
Total.
Only ten thousand more?
Yep. I think that, and, and they are good people, they, Air Quality, and this is under Air Quality Experts, Inc., they've been in business a while, we've used them before, and they're reputable, and I checked all the references. So, it's the same people that is taking the asbestos out.
Rick, did you discuss it, did you, have you discussed this with Al, this new proposal, or?
We hadn't.
Did you hear the summary? Okay, that's okay.
The summary is, the summary is, Air Quality Experts, the same outfit that's going to remove the asbestos, works with a team of demo, demo contractors, and they provided a quote of twenty-one-five for removal of the building, approximately five days, and then they added another alternative, this would take a few more days, but I haven't talked with them about how much longer it would take. Thirty-one thousand to remove the foundation slab, walls, footings, and slope for safety purposes.
So, that's thirty-one thousand more?
No. The price is, oh, okay, it could be.
It's got to be, because you can't see it being ten thousand dollars.
But anyway, the, the demo is twenty-one-five, and they're reputable.
When did you get that out?
I just got that the other day. Came in on April fourth, but I'd been out.
As we know, yeah.
Okay.
You said we've used them before, what did we use them for?
We, we haven't used them, asbestos removal.
Oh, okay.
Strictly, and, so when he came up again and he asked me what we were doing, and I, I told him, I said, "We're taking proposals." He said, "If you don't mind, I'll give you one." I said, "Sure." So, his team, same team would put it together.
It's got to be additional.
He said that, he said the crusher was two-fifty an hour, so, figure that.
Can the council get a copy of that, Al?
Just one-page proposal, yes.
So, we can have at the rest of them?
Sure.
Yeah, it's pretty much the same information. It says that all the materials will go to a landfill, approved landfill, all salvage rights are theirs, so...
And Air Quality Experts, they're, got a good, enjoy a good reputation with the state DES, asbestos removal, they are a reputable contractor.
Okay. Anybody in the council have any further questions? You want to?
I'd like a copy of that.
Yep. Let's just pass it around, and we'll make sure everybody gets a copy. Does the council want to proceed with a resolution to... Well, where would the money come from? You weren't here when we discussed that, but is this coming from the revenue?
From the insurance.
From the insurance, okay, yes.
Settlement.
And that was two-hundred-and-nine thousand?
It was two-hundred-and-nine thousand, less the work that we've already done. We've done some demo work up there in the building ourselves, so there were some fees that were attached to.
It will come out of that, two-hundred-and-nine thousand.
Two-hundred-and-nine thousand, exactly.
We asked, when you were out copying, we asked Director Malaski if his staff would have time this summer to actually do the concrete removal slab work, and he said he would come back with an estimate of costs for renting the machinery and doing it, but if we actually start doing field construction work, site prep for the Packers Falls Athletic Complex, it doesn't seem like they will have time, so I'm thinking that we might want to get another proposal.
On the excavation.
On this slab work as well, because I don't want to just look at this thirty-one thousand dollars and say, "Oh, sure, that's great," without getting comparables. And also getting an estimate from Rick about what it costs and staff.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't ask for, I, I told him he would be responsible for taking down a grade, that at some point, we would be taking the, the form work out, so they just added that in when I, when I got it.
Well, I mean, I don't, I think we'd want to go with the Air Quality Experts at twenty-one thousand dollars, but I don't know, anybody else have any questions or wants more information?
Makes sense.
I mean, they're already going to be on-site doing the asbestos work, they've hit all the key qualifications for what they're going to do with the site.
But it doesn't, if I got that right, it doesn't include moving the floor?
Yeah.
No, I'll have to get clarification on that.
So, what is it, this one's going to do it, the yellow one's not going to do it?
It's the same.
The same proposal, twenty-one-five, takes it down to the foundation.
Okay, so it's the same, is the Kidder?
Yes.
Okay.
They had an add-on, but...
We had a proposal...
They don't have anything to compare that add-on to.
You have a proposal in your package that's approximately twenty-one-five, but the company was, you just didn't pan out.
Twenty-one.
And in this case, when this proposal came back to us, come back to me, and I've been digging through my paperwork since I've been in and out, the proposal, and I, I've talked with DES before we even hired Air Quality Experts for the asbestos removal, and they enjoy a good reputation.
Someone like to make, I mean, this...
Does the motion?
Let's, let's make a motion to proceed with one of the companies and bring it to a resolution at the main business meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
To proceed with, which company?
Air Quality.
Okay, so Counselor Caprioli made the motion, Counselor Glennon seconded it, that I heard? Okay. Any discussion? Counselor Glennon?
Yeah, I mean, when we say go with the Air Quality, is that the one?
The one that we just passed around, yeah.
We're going to give the others, or particularly Kidder, the opportunity to...
What?
No, you can't.
We're just bidding, we're just hiring the removal to slab, not the slab.
I'm still out of the mindset, there's something different between the two, but there isn't. They're both the same, okay.
The only one that was different was the other twenty-one thousand dollar proposal, but Rick didn't get a comfortable answer in terms of where they were going to dispose of the materials, and we don't want to be disposing of them illegally or in an appropriate location.
Questionable. Okay. Roll call.
Yep. Please proceed with the roll call vote on proceeding with the removal of the Quonset Hut, Rockingham Shoe Structure using Air, Air Quality with a formal resolution at the main business meeting.
Counselor Jerry Hamel.
Aye.
Counselor Caprioli.
Aye.
Counselor Morrison.
Aye.
Counselor Will Hamel.
Aye.
Counselor Glennon.
Aye.
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Counselor Hart.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Jen, you're back before us, and the council did receive this, and so, in advance, we just didn't get the actual right copy in the packet, so if you could hit the high points and maybe focus on the key recommendations from your perspective, that'd be great, because I'm sure we'll have discussion and questions for you. This one does include the chart from Clay's study, as well as maps and photographs.
Okay, just to let you know, I, I realized that the town council received this in advance, but for the people that are watching on TV, I'm trying to get out as much information as possible that the, that this committee really did do its homework and where the findings came from, so excuse me if it sounds redundant, but we're almost there. So, now that you have the new copy in front of you, it, basically, the difference are there's a fill-in for the proposed number of spaces under Phase Two plans. Skipping down to the table two, the off-street public parking, there are eighty-two off-street public parking spaces currently, although the Elm Street lot includes seventy-five spots, the use of fifty-five of those spots is restricted, and ten of these spaces are designated for use by the library and its patrons. Forty-five of these spots are available for lease through the town. Task three was for the committee to look for, for potential locations for additional off-street parking. The parking committee did not speak to any of the owners of the private lots, we just went through town deciding where we thought the best spaces for parking, other off-street parking would be. Table three shows the parking lots with potential for some expanded public parking. Table four, potential locations for immediate and future parking, the committee was looking to make sure that we met the needs for, our, our immediate needs, also looked at our immediate needs for when Phase Two construction begins, and then again for future parking after the Phase Two construction. We also looked at the impact on future parking needs from the Main Street Mills redevelopment. Task five being options for the better utilizing of existing parking. We examined some of the existing off-street parking, some of the non-public parking lots, and we also looked at the, to address the off-street parking during Phase Two of Main Street construction. I'm just going to go through the recommendations quickly so everybody knows what those are, and then if you have any questions. The committee came up with the following recommendations. The first one is to acquire additional off-street public parking in the center and southern end of downtown New Market. Number two is to work with businesses and property owners to better utilize availability, available privately-owned parking lots, especially during Phase Two construction. And basically, the idea that we had here is to talk to private business, private parking lot owners, let's say Bank of America, Joyce's Kitchen, and could the public use their private parking lots after hours? Those were some of the ideas. There are specific examples here, as you can see. Number three, to offer incentives for parking in the areas peripheral to the downtown. As everyone knows, there, there are a lot of off-street public parking at the northern end of town, but we're finding that people aren't willing to park there to come down into town. And although these parking spaces will be great when we redevelop the mills, currently they're not helping, well, they're helping, but the, people aren't using them as, as much as they should. So, if we did decide to go into some kind of pay-for parking in the downtown area, the recommendation is that there would be incentives for people to park on the outskirts of town. Number four was to investigate time parking systems for the downtown on-street parking spots. Number five, enforce existing parking regulations. As I spoke earlier, currently, that's not being done. And number six, to identify and promote existing public parking. You have all the materials used in the preparation of this report, so you can see where we got our numbers from, and I'll just take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Jen. Jen, there's, there, we don't have a copy, just to clarify, of everything, because then you'd have as thick as your folders for the whole meeting, but there is a...
There's a list there that tells you where you can find it.
And there's a bound copy of that material, will be completed by staff and put at the library and town hall, so... Okay, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Jarvis, or Counselor Glennon or I, as committee members? Counselor Caprioli, sorry.
I'm just curious, and I don't know if this was part of your charge, or if it's a, something you guys would look at in the future, was there any discussions around mitigation for parking, setting up a parking fund? Or is that?
No.
Not here yet? You know what I mean? I mean, I know this is your first charge, so maybe I'm premature in asking the question.
We did, we did speak briefly of where, let's, although it's sporadic, when somebody gets a parking ticket downtown, where does that money go to? And could that money be used to go towards future parking? Is that kind of what you're asking, or?
Well, it's that, and, I mean, we talked about, as a council, at one point, setting up some sort of fund, because I don't think we, we have something that's site-specific, and I'm kind of incorporating things on the planning board right now, but, so that everybody that develops in the downtown contributes to the needs for parking.
Yeah, that wasn't, that wasn't particularly discussed, but the, the town commissioned two studies, which we referenced, which were drafts, and I'm not sure if they've been finalized, by Bruce Mayberry and Wilbur Smith Associates, to try to figure out what kind of fee is appropriate and can be based on actual costs to charge new development coming into downtown, like Smyno's or other, or other companies, to help establish that. So, that was referenced, and it depends on, they didn't, I'm not, I'm not even sure what the status is, it's been a while since I read it, so I don't know, let the administrator follow up on that.
Okay. Basically, the research they have is, there isn't, they haven't been able to find, and I haven't been able to find, any community that has an impact fee ordinance for parking. They have, communities have exercised exaction fees, you know, from...
That's what it's called.
Okay, yeah. And that's, that's something that, that has, has been done through the planning and site plan approval process. plan approval process. We're trying to develop something a little more formal. I think, because of the extent of it and everything, Bruce is going to be able to do something for us, but I've kind of put him on hold until I get a charge from the town council. I think it's time that we update all of our impact fees and have him look at that, as well as an exaction fee, whatever, help us shape the reality for that, you know, the model for that. Our exaction, or our impact fees now are at least four years old. A lot of things have happened. In the area of wastewater and water, I think we can do substantial improvements. And we might even want to, I, we didn't do it last time, but we might want to this time look at impact fee on roads with developments in certain corridors.
And I just have one more question.
Counselor Caprioli.
You talked about incentives. What kind of incentives were you thinking to get people to park up?
Some, some of the ideas that we had, one of them were that we would try to get employees to not park on Main Street, because they're taking up a lot of the spaces for customers, so maybe offer free parking or parking passes for employees of the downtown area to park up, let's say by the Quonset huts and the library. The other thing that we talked about is that if the downtown, and I guess it would be only an incentive, if, if we started paying for parking in the downtown area, you would pay less to park in the parking lots at the end of, at the end of town. Can you think of any other incentives? I think it was just a monetary incentive to get people to walk, and that what we...
I was thinking metered parking downtown and not...
Yeah, and the, and the discussions on metered was, be very careful.
Or pay for, whatever.
And, yeah, and it wasn't, the idea that we discussed wasn't actual meters, but Exeter, and I'm not sure if it passed, it probably did, at town meeting.
I don't think it did.
They were going to install, like, a computer box, and the spots would be numbered, and then he'd walk up to it, and there'd be, they'd be up against, like, the building, so they wouldn't be intrusive. And you, you know, you put your five dollars in for the whole day or whatever, and you type your number in.
They have one of those lots in Durham. I don't know if you've seen it before, but they have one in Durham. You pull in and you just see the slots and pay there, so that you wouldn't have, nobody wants to see meters all over the downtown. We thought about the aesthetics of it, and we also thought about the maintenance, who was going to maintain the parking meters.
Yeah, and those units will also take MasterCard, American Express, anything you have, basically.
Yeah.
As far as where does the parking violation fees go right now? We have set up, I think it was two years ago, a parking fund, so the parking, all those parking violation fees go into a parking fund. And we're using that, setting it aside and building it up to, to build up a reserve to work on improving parking. Also had limited discussion with Chairman Hart, and it's something that's going to take a great deal of time, but, you know, there are communities in the state of New Hampshire and elsewhere that have a downtown district, village district. And one that I'm very familiar, that I worked with, was Littleton, New Hampshire, and there was an extra assessment, maybe a buck per thousand on valuation within that district, on the properties within that district. Particularly, it was the business district, or the business properties. And that money was dedicated to, totally to providing parking and parking improvements, and it worked very well.
Did it also include a meter maid type thing?
Well, it depends on what you want to fund.
So they can give the tickets and then bring that money in? Excuse me.
Depends on what you want to fund as, as a council. No, it did not. Our police department, in that case, walked the beat. I had a chairman at that, that point was very adamant, if he didn't see the police, the police chief at four o'clock walking Main Street, he called my office. And I called the police chief, and the police chief said, "Yes, I'm on my way."
Man.
Brian, if I could ask...
Counselor Glennon?
In addition to what Jen is saying for incentive, we, I believe it started originally with the Highway Safety Committee, and I think we, I brought that information into our committee, is that we asked Dan Vincent, the co-enforcement officer, to look at the properties downtown and see behind each structure if there was places to, for them to add additional parking for their employees, and possibly be able to share those parking spaces with other merchants in the downtown, to keep the employees off the street. And that was included in our report, too. Some places, I think we found one place could have, like, five or six, maybe enough to ten spots, that they could, if they really concentrated behind their building, cleaned it out, I don't mean it's like trash, or they might, you know, did a little bit of paving, a little bit excavating, and whatever, they could add additional parking in the back. So, yeah, I kind of looked at everything there.
And just to summarize, Dan, is that we did pursue every avenue that we could think of, and then we did have a public session in case there was something that we missed. And we invited people to make comments, I think up to three weeks after that public session, if someone was unable to be there. Just to comment quickly, Mr. Dixon, is that we did not discuss the idea that you were, that you were just proposing of a possible extra tax on business owners to come up with money to go towards parking. We did, however, discuss tip monies, thinking about that, thinking about where the money would come from, and definitely setting up some kind of fund.
Yeah. I just offered that as another alternative to look at, which could be, I think, very good for the future, because you get these areas in place, once you buy them, you have to set them up and everything. Costs money to maintain them, and that way, the business district gets what they want, and the rest of the town gets what they want.
And I think that would be information that would probably be helpful to come after the town has established that impact fee or something for new businesses coming into town. It would be a good thing to look at. I just want to bring up one quick point, just because the, the next agenda item addresses this, is that when this committee was charged with addressing off-street parking during Phase Two of Main Street construction, the following properties could provide parking opportunities during Phase Two construction. These properties are located either, at either the south end or the north end of Phase Two construction area, which would allow customers and employees to park outside of construction and walk into town. The first one on that list is the current fire, the old fire station, which would be on the south end. The second, the Quonset huts, which would be on the north end. Route 108 Autobody, which would be on the south end, and 177 Main Street, which would be on the north end. I just wanted to bring it to your attention that the old fire station is at a location right now that would really help the downtown businesses if that parking lot could be used temporarily during the Phase Two construction, because it would allow people to park there and walk into town on the, on the south end. Myself and Brian Hart did go to the school board, because it is the school board that owns that building, and asked them to consider giving the town council some time to think about that, and how important that piece of property could be to the downtown businesses being viable through the downtown reconstruction Phase Two. So I would really like you to consider that seriously. Again, it's not knocking down the fire station, it's just holding on to that piece of property during that construction. So if nobody else has any more questions.
So before we discuss that at length, which I'm sure we will, let's see if there's any other questions about the parking report.
Did you get an answer from the school board?
What we got from the school board is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but that they could see the need on the efforts to work as a community, and they wanted to support the ideas of the businesses and allow them some opportunity to ask the town council to think about that piece of property. So they gave us an extension, which I believe was a month, until the end of, or until May, that they will not put that property on the market, until the town councils had an opportunity to see the importance of it to the business community.
Thanks, Jen.
Fair?
Any other questions or discussion of the parking committee report? Eventually, it might be good to discuss this at a business meeting and see if we want to adopt any of its recommendations to guide staff work on these issues, so. The next chairman of the council will have the opportunity to schedule that for an agenda, So that brings us to the discussion of the old fire station and potential for parking. And I think Jen accurately summarized the discussions with the school board, and what, to share with the whole council, I have had discussions with members of the school board and with the school superintendent as a town counselor, but not representing the whole town council, that I felt it was pretty important that that property be kept available in the short term, for the next few years, while we're doing Phase Two, because as Jen explained, it would provide supplemental parking off-street that would be close to downtown, with really a minimal cost to the community. And, and so, the school has expressed the desire that, well, they, they see the property as a resource for addressing their financial needs for the reconstruction, rebuilding, or new construction of a high school, middle school, et cetera. So they have some concerns about not, it not being available financially for a few years, but they did give us the opportunity to present something to them. So what I was hoping we'd be able to discuss is whether this council feels it would be appropriate to initiate discussions with the school board about that facility, and whether or not we can work out some kind of arrangement to keep it available through Phase Two construction. So I'll open it up for a discussion from there. Counselor Glennon?
Did we not have an agreement with the school board that we would maintain the facility, you know, keep the heat and insurance and all that? And I thought they had agreed to that. Was that all part of...
They did agree to it, but the, I think we missing, well, I think the communication from the school board wasn't as clear, and we miscon, I personally misunderstood what it was saying. They agreed to that, but it wasn't through the timeframe that I was on the impression, which was 2008 or so. It was for the short term, this winter.
Okay.
So when we, when I asked the town administrator to proceed with trying to get that formalized for council adoption as an agreement, they said, "Well, we're planning to sell it."
And they need to sell it now to raise capital for...
What they're doing.
Well, what they're doing.
See, the problem was that they went to town, their town meeting with an article, to see whether or not the voters would allow them to dispose, yes, and obviously attach. One thing, we didn't proceed with putting any extra money in for fuel or maintenance of the building next year, and we'd have to come up with that money, but...
Yeah. I mean, a couple of things. One is, the, the voters did authorize the school board, give the school board the ability to sell. The school board doesn't have to do that, so they have the flexibility to make that decision. They have the authority now to actually sell or not. And then, in terms of the expenses, yeah, there will be expenses to heat the building, to keep the water pressure up, to visit the site occasionally, to make sure nothing's happening. I think that that would be something we should cover through the parking fund, as the cost of maintaining a parking lot. That's one way to consider it.
I, I have another...
Let me just finish. Then the other, the other thing that I just want to share is, you know, with Phase Two construction, the biggest impact not only is, of course, going to be on the businesses and traffic and pedestrian flow, but the actual on-street parking is going to be very limited. We, we don't have, you know, proposals yet for the construction, but we know that there's going to be one lane closed a lot, which means all those parking spaces, whatever side it's on, will be gone. So that's why I think it's so important. And then, that we had the site available. So if we were able to come up with an arrangement that kept the site being available, it would have, based on Rick's calculations, and Rick's not here, twelve to fourteen spaces onsite without the building being occupied. And then, once we're done Phase Two, it would be sold by the town or school district. And I'm fairly confident that, once we're done with the work on Phase Two, every property in downtown is going to be worth more money, including this building.
Well, yeah, this is exactly where I was going, was, didn't we have some type of agreement through the open space bond, something like $500,000, that they needed to do something right away, but somehow the fire station was going to play a role in that? That if we were able to give them the money, that they would hold on to the building for our needs for parking? They felt at that point they wouldn't really have to sell it right away?
There was some communication similar to that, but it was a long time ago, last fall, and I don't recall exactly what it said. They are looking for the town to provide financial support for the acquisition of land if they, school facilities committee proceeds with a recommendation for that. There, I just got communication from Mr. Hawkins that indicates that, that facilities committee's final decision recommendation will be within four to six weeks.
And do they have an assessed value on the property yet?
The appraisal, they said the appraised value was $250,000, which is very similar to what, I think we did, we did an appraisal.
Yeah, the fire station. $250,000?
Yes.
I thought it was higher. So that's why, I guess I'm getting that $250,000 versus a $500,000, that open space bond, and I guess I was on the impression that the fire station would stay, and what, like you're saying, while it stayed there, and the construction of the downtown is being done, that just increases the value of that property. So down the road, if they didn't have to sell it right now, they'd have a higher value. Does that make sense?
I think it would be more...
Should we pursue that with the school board?
Well, I think it's on the table. Isn't it? Yeah, I mean, the goal here is for us to...
Is it on the table? Yeah, okay.
The consensus is, the goal here is for us to have consensus direction on what we want to do, then we can authorize myself, or Al, or whoever, to talk with the school board. Counselor Morrison?
If the building's going to be unoccupied, why do we have to maintain it with heat? Can't we close it up like a winter, a summer cottage? Can't, just drain the pipes and shut it up?
That's an option.
I mean, if nobody's going to be using it at all. So it is...
It's an option. I asked the same question, why would we need to heat it? But that...
We could drain the wa, the water out of the pipes.
Yeah, I'm just not sure if a brick structure likes to be unheated, and then warmed up and unheated, and frozen, basically, you know, minus twenty, minus ten.
Yeah.
I don't know, on the inside. Probably didn't stay that warm as it was.
Yeah. Well, I could ask Rick. He's gone. Can we move to start this process? Contact the school board and... Can I make that motion?
The school board has given us the opportunity, so what we need to decide is, I mean, basically, yes, we can. That's what I'm looking for, the council, you know, to indicate if they want, if they think this property is worth securing for the next few years.
Well, I mean, it's only going to, it's only going to appreciate in value.
Unless there's major damage to the building, I can't see how it wouldn't increase in value. Or if the real estate market collapses.
Or an ice age. No, in an ice age, it would be worth even more, because it's inside.
Chief here, did you have...
Well, there may be a reason why you may want to keep it maintained for a short period of time, anyway. And we found this out the hard way. We had a power outage here about a month or so ago, after the fire department moved out. And the transmitter site for the radio up on Zion's Hill, the backup power for that is the generator that's sitting inside the old fire station.
That's right.
So until we can make some alternate arrangements, we'll make sure that the transmitter is going to receive power and outage. That's our backup.
Makes sense. Need a motion?
I'm just taking notes from what Kevin said. Hold on.
Gentlemen in the audience, the... Sir? If you'd like to come up to...
Comment if I could?
Sure.
Peter Witham, Ashwam Road, resident of Newmarket. I've been kind of following this, the sale of the, the fire station as a, as, mostly from the perspective of, as an interested buyer. And just a couple of points. If you take a step back and look at this from a taxpayer's perspective, the town has now voted twice, basically, to sell this building. We voted the first time to sell it when we voted in the new fire station. That was advertised as a $1 million build cost, offset $250,000 through the sale of the existing fire station. So the new fire station wasn't going to cost a million, it was going to cost $750,000. Now, we found out subsequently later that the town didn't actually own it, so it went over to the school board. Now, if the town is, is, I know there was some discussion about the town now purchasing that back, and through conservation land, open space funds, or something like that. Now, what that does to the new, the cost of the new fire station, it actually takes it from a million, and if you, you know, if you buy that back from the school district at $250,000, it puts the new fire station now at 1.25 million. Does everybody understand the math there? So what was originally, you know, advertised to the town as a $750,000 cost, the town went along with that, you know, decided that we needed a new fire station, and now we're looking at a half a million dollars more than that. So when the school board found out that they owned it, they put it before the voters to say, "Okay, what are we going to do with this thing?" And the voters just voted back, I guess in March, to give the school board authorization to sell it. And they voted that, that passed by a five-to-one margin, if you look at the numbers on that. I mean, I think it's pretty clear that the town voted overwhelmingly to sell this building. And the way the, the article was written was, it was, they authorized the school board to sell or transfer the building in the best interest, acting in the best interest of the school district. Okay, so now the question becomes, is it in the best interest of the school district to sell the building now, or actually wait four years to sell it? So let's look just for a second at what it's going to cost the school district, in the town of Newmarket, and ultimately, the voters, to keep that building for another four years. And I just ran some very, very quick numbers, and, and my numbers, you know, may be based on some percentages and calculations that, basically, I think these numbers are pretty close. And I basically came up with four factors that are going to play into this, and you think it's going to be a low-cost option to keep this open. Remember now, we're talking about twelve parking spots, twelve. Depreciation on the building, it might be worth more, you know, real estate values might go up, but if you look at it from a business perspective, there's depreciation on the building. And you depreciate commercial buildings over a forty-year period. You divide that total cost of the billion, building, by the depreciation, that comes out to $6,250 per year, that the town's eating in depreciation on that building. Add to that maintenance and insurance. If you're going to heat the building, then the cost goes up who knows how much. If, you know, I just figured, say, $2,000 for insurance, and maybe keep it plowed, right, for a year? Maintenance and insurance. The building's in not, not very good condition. I had an opportunity to tour it twice. I had an opportunity to tour it twice, as a prospective buyer, and the wiring's not great. I mean, there's a reason that the fire department wanted out of there. The roof is a little bit shaky. The building is not going to get any better with age. Abandoned buildings don't. We only need to look up at the Rockingham Shoe Building to get an example of that. Now, if the property was sold today, that money would go in the school board's capital reserve fund, and that obviously makes interest, right? Makes money. So, if you base that at 5% per year on that $250,000, there's another 1,200. Then, you have to figure if the town, if the property was sold today, then it would automatically, you know, day one, be contributing taxes to the town, right? In a $250,000 building, at a tax rate of 17%, I'm not sure if that's the commercial rate, I know that's the residential rate, 17%.
One rate.
What's that?
One rate for all property.
Okay, 17% is the actual. Again, based on a $250,000 value, that's $4,200 per year that that, whoever buys that building is going to be contributing back to the town. So, now, all of a sudden, this low-cost option of 12 parking spots that we're going to need, again, in four years, we don't necessarily need them today, we need them in four years. It comes out to like $13,650 per year to put that place on ice. Over four years, that's in excess of $50,000. So, I, from a taxpayer's perspective, I think it, it's important that the town understand that there is a cost to do this. And what's the benefit? I mean, I think if you were going to raise the building and put in 50 spots, and it was going to be a permit parking lot, okay, maybe, you know, maybe you can justify it. But, given that we're looking at 12 to 14 spots that we're going to need in three years to put that building on ice, after the town has voted on it twice, just doesn't make any sense to me.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your opportunity.
You're welcome. A couple of thoughts, just to respond, and share my perspective on some of those. I think that if you, when you get a chance to read the whole committee report on parking, and the council does, there's, and I, maybe the business community wants to share their perspective at some point, but there's a clear demand now for parking, regardless of this, of the Phase Two. There's a sense from the business community and from residents that we need more parking downtown. So, I think it will serve a public benefit now. We've looked at some other properties, and some other landlords have contacted us, and those are all $250,000 purchases. So, so you're looking at $20,000 a spot to acquire, and then those costs, and then lost tax revenue for any spot we buy. So, it's a trade-off. The thing that makes this most interesting to me is that we can sell it in a couple of years when the Phase Two is done, and the need for that period of time is met. So, that's why I don't think this site makes sense, because I like the building, I think it's important historically and architecturally for that portion of town, and I want to see it being used. I just think we have, we could have a couple of years to have another use. Unfortunately, we didn't have a crystal ball about when we proposed the new fire station, public works facility. There was mistakes made about the deed, which we've taken responsibility for, and it was an unfortunate mistake, was not, not purposeful in any way. And I understand those concerns, there's no real counter-argument to the fact that not selling this building will essentially not reduce the cost of, of the fire, rescue, police, public works facility. There is a slip. And any, I guess the other part is, any parking that we have is going to have annual maintenance costs, so we just need to understand that, as, as the town council. So, Counselor Caprilli was waiting.
Yeah, I just want to say, I have to agree with this gentleman, as much as I know we need parking, we've got a lot of things coming up in the future that, you know, are expensive, and I understand that there was, you know, that we didn't have the crystal ball, and we were unaware of the ownership and the errors in the deed, or whatever, but we did tell the public it would reduce the cost of the fire station by $250,000, and he's right, they did vote on that twice, and I, I was sitting here contemplating that myself while we were discussing that, and I just, I think we need to take that into consideration when we vote on this.
Counselor Glennon?
I understand your concerns there. However, I want to look at it, not just from a cost point, but I want to also look at it as a, what it will do economically for the downtown business people, when they start going through that renovation process. Yes, the cost here, on this end, that you eloquently pointed out, versus what will do for the business community in the downtown area. One only has to look at what happened in Exeter, and I know for a fact, and I believe there was one business that lost 90% of its customers because of the construction, and ultimately folded, and ended up by closing out. As Mr. Detremont did state, the need for parking is now. It is also going to be more relevant in four years, or three years, or however, whatever the timeline is for the Phase Two downtown. So, you, I know, and I don't want to sound callous here, but you can't always look at this portion of the equation and say, here's the cost, if we don't do it, or if we, you know, don't sell the building now, versus what is the economic impact that it will have for the, the community in the downtown, as it was stated earlier, that once the construction starts in the downtown area, you're going to have parking going one way. And how long that's going to be? So, one whole side of the street's going to be gone parking. So, anything we can do, and I think also here, what we need to do is look at, with the administrator, with the school superintendent and the school board, to see what's the best for both worlds. Yes, they were, it was voted to, to be sold, the town people said, yes, you can do that, go ahead. However, there was no timeline put on that. So, I don't want anybody to be pressured to say, well, they said we have, we can sell it, but we have to do it in this timeline. I think that's where the interest of both sides of the equation, or all sides, have to come together and see what's really, what's best for the town. And this is what this council does, tries to look at it from different perspectives, and you gave a very good scenario here, however, it can't just be that scenario, there has to be other equations put into that decision. Thank you.
Counselor Foster?
Very cognizant of what you said about the selling of that, because also, Counselor Hamel and I were on that committee for the fire and rescue building, and we talked about that, and the other building we talked about was the ambulance building, which we're still holding on to, and there's still some questions about that. But at the same time, there's definitely a need there. I guess my question is, and not necessarily directed at you, being a possible buyer or bidder on that property, is I wonder if there's a possibility of someone purchasing that building, depending on what they're going to do about it, do with it, and while they may be increasing some demand on parking, maybe the demand that they're going to be, that their business, or whatever they're going to be putting in there, won't take up as many spaces as are there. Meaning, you're going to put in a business, you say it's going to have six, typically six spaces you're going to need, the parking lot makes 10, we have a net gain at the same time it sells. I don't know, I don't know. I guess it's kind of difficult to make that type of arrangement, saying you're only going to sell the property to someone who's going to, won't need as many parking spaces as are possibly there. But I, I do hear what you're saying.
Would someone like to make a motion regarding this?
What's the motion going to say?
Brian, can I say one?
Sure.
Just briefly. I was also under the impression, as the president of the New Market Business Association, that the sale of the firehouse would go to the new one. I think if, if we look at, if, that that situation has already passed, and the sale of the firehouse at this point has nothing to do with the current new fire station. And what we're looking at is that the parking committee is recommending to the town council to invest in parking in the downtown area. And if you look at it in the way that, like Brian just said, there aren't many properties available in the downtown that would be less than $250,000. So, if you look at this opportunity to say that the town purchases this building for $250,000 to secure parking, and to secure more economic viability for the downtown area, and then, eight years from now, five years from now, when Phase Two is over, the town sells that property. The, the money that they've made in the sale of that property, if you want to say, could go back to the fire station. The town is going to be making money. It was never put to the voters, would you like to use this piece of property to help offset parking in the downtown area? This piece of property has never been put to the voters as the actual purpose of this property, except to offset costs to the fire station, which didn't happen. So, I just don't think it's fair to say that the voters have said that they want to sell this property, yes, they have, but they haven't said, you know, they haven't been given the opportunity to think about it as an avenue to save money on parking, which it would be an investment that the town is willing to make now, which would cost less money than if they did it later.
Let's see, counsel, well, my suggestion is that if we, as a council, would like to make a specific proposal, that we discuss this specific proposal in non-public, in terms of that, what we'd actually be willing to offer, and then, but if we're not willing to, so, what we could maybe discuss right now is, if we want to proceed, that's, we can discuss it in non-public later when we have the, the land acquisition portion. If we don't want to proceed with a proposal as a council, then we won't go into non-public to pull together what we're willing to do. Counselor Morrison, and Counselor Jerry Hamel?
I was just going to move that we accept the report and direct the town administrator to begin a dialogue with the school board as to securing the old fire station for overflow parking for the Phase Two, or through Phase Two, the completion of Phase Two.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Counselor Morrison?
A little awkwardly worded.
No. Direct the town administrator to initiate the negotiations with the school board for parking at the old firehouse.
Could I offer a friendly amendment? Generally, I would work with the administrator, so that would be to work with the super-
Superintendent?
Yes. And she would work with her board.
Right, that makes sense. Counselor Jerry Hamel, I know you haven't had a chance to speak, so.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to emphasize, we're talking, 12 parking spots here, and I don't know any businessman that would buy a building to hold on to. Now, I've heard for as many as eight years now, these numbers keep running out, and to create 12 parking places, and then try to sell a building that's been abandoned for that amount of time, and expect to make more money on it, I, I don't know. I don't think we should be doing this to the taxpayers. I think, let the building go, let the school do what they want to with it. If somebody else wants to try to create that kind of parking, and expect it to be a moneymaker or a boon to anybody for 12 parking places, I mean, I wish them well, but I don't think we should be doing it. We've been buying enough property, we've got no business buying anymore right now. We've got some big things to look forward to, plus I'm still optimistic that we won't be doing this downtown project, Phase Two or whatever, so. We may not need the parking.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All right, please call the roll and the motion.
Counselor Jerry Hamel.
Nay.
Counselor Caprilli.
Uh, nay, and I'm sorry.
Counselor Morrison.
Aye.
Counselor Will Hamel.
Yea.
Counselor Glennon.
Aye.
Counselor Foster.
It's been a while since I've had a temple.
What the priestless.
Aye.
Counselor Hart.
Aye.
Motion carried 423.
Yes.
Though, I'm sure there'll be further discussion about this with the next council, so, not going to happen immediately.
We're going to come up with a number that works.
Next item is review of draft ordinance 2005-08, authorization for filing. Is this a resolution?
Yes.
Resolution.
Yes.
Okay, it's a resolution, excuse me. Review of draft resolution 2005-08, authorization for filing amended prime wetlands application with New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services in the Follet Brook area. The resolution, I guess I'll read it out loud. Resolution regarding prime wetlands, resolution number 2005-08, authorization for filing amended prime wetlands application with New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. Whereas, the New Market Planning Board has voted on May 20th, 2003, to bring forth prime wetlands designation application for filing with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services and the town council. Whereas, the town council and planning board recognize that the protection of wetland resources will protect the health and general welfare of the citizens of the town of New Market, and are part of an extensive natural water system that protects from flooding, filter, filters, pollutants, and provides for water storage. Excuse me. Whereas, the town council recognizes that significant research and study has been completed to identify a particular wetlands in accordance with New Hampshire State law RSA 42A:15, as to their unique and significant environmental value, and these identified wetlands deserve special attention in terms of protection for future viability as a critical resource. And whereas, the Conservation Commission has completed a compliant evaluation and designation report in accordance with RSA 42A:15, prime wetlands, local option, and associated regulations. New Market Prime Wetland Designation Study, West Environmental Incorporated, report dated January 20th, 2003. And whereas, the town council recognizes that Follet Brook presents a potential water supply location requiring impacts to the wetland soils to upgrade and maintain the system, which will likely create undue burden and expense with respect to state permitting and the Conservation Commission, with respect to state permitting. And the Conservation Commission has supported the removal of the Follet Brook wetland designated as NEO2, and sent a report as a designated prime wetland. Now, therefore, be it resolved that New Mark, town of New Market does ordain the necessary application package, including the following report, as amended herein, and associated maps, be followed with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services seeking prime wetland designation. Then it lists the West Environmental Report, the evaluation sheets for the prime wetland designation, and the revised maps printed April 18th, 2005, which removed the Follet Brook watershed. This resolution shall take effect upon its passage, given that the town council chambers New Market, New Hampshire, this 20th day of April, in the year of our Lord 2005. Is there a motion, or discussion regarding resolution 2005-08? The motion would be to move it to the business meeting, if there was such a desire.
I'll make a motion to move it to the May business meeting, resolution 2005-8, prime, resolution regarding prime wetlands.
Is there a second? Counselor Wolford Hamel, second. Discussion? Counselor Glennon?
The only question I have is, how, how does this play with, what will we do, if we were pulling another one or something?
Okay, so, what happened is, we voted to authorize the town administrator to send a letter to DES saying, hey, wait a second, don't, don't actually complete the process on the previous application for prime wetlands, for status. We want to, we want to consider amending it. So, in that interim period, the town administrator, Will Clay Mitchell, met with the Conservation Commission, I believe, and discussed it with them, and they agreed that removing Follet Brook as a prime wetland from the state application process was in the best interest of the town. So, this is to remove only Follet Brook from that whole application of prime wetlands. And then, we resubmit it, and it still is underneath our ordinance. And the reason is because of the work that's necessary that the Follet Brook Committee has recommended, it'll be much more difficult if it's designated as a prime wetland, because the state has more stringent regulations on prime wetlands. We'll still be able to protect that area through our own ordinances and the planning board review. Plus, most of the properties in that area are either conserved or developed right now. Does that help?
Yep. Thank you.
Any further questions? Discussion? Everybody understand what we're doing? Okay, this is a motion to move the oral resolution 2005-08 to the May business meeting. Please proceed with the roll call.
Counselor Jerry Hamel.
Aye.
Counselor Caprilli.
Aye.
Counselor Morrison.
Aye.
Counselor Will Hamel.
Aye.
Counselor Glennon.
Aye.
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Counselor Hart.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I just request a brief recess. Be back in five minutes.
I don't like it when we disagree. I like it when you-
Hey. Why do I do that? Hey. Where's my glasses? Yeah. I was watching that.
Whatever.
I'll give you, I'm going to give you my email, request emails, to send a picture to, right now.
Not yet.
Long way in.
Yep.
Catch.
New glasses, first day with them, that thing was really big.
Okay, we're ready, Mike, or whoever's downstairs. Item number seven is discussion of downtown economic and community development coordinator position. Did you skip a page there, Scott?
Yeah, I did. I thought we were almost done.
You came in late and you want to leave early?
This agenda item is, this agenda item, we've discussed a couple times, and I just think it'd be important for us to discuss it again and maybe bring some more resolution to it, if the council saw it as ours. Counselor Caprioli.
Do we have a job description writ, or a potential job description written yet? I would like to see that.
All right, well, maybe the question then is, that's a good idea, maybe the question is, do we want the person to focus on Phase Two, Riverwalk, downtown, parking, that kind of stuff, and that's it? Or do, and meaning they communicate and coordinate and maybe do some of the economic development stuff if they can, if they have those skills, because they're different sets of skills? Or do we want the person to do that as well as Black Bear, or the Business District, the B3 District, or, that's the kind of question I have, so.
When would we be looking to hire this person? In the very near future?
Let's see, if we're going to hear back from Underwood in the summer about the cost estimates, well, we got that, but we have to go over that, actually, because we got it while you were away. But the, I would think probably, I don't know, what's your suggestion?
I would say, previously when I was working on this kind of position with the Draft Regional Planning Commission, I was looking at, and we were targeting probably in the August, September period.
Because, the way I'm thinking of it, obviously I'm not writing a job description, as they familiarize themselves with the community and the people they're going to be working with and that type of thing, then, as, I see them doing the TIF and stuff, but as Phase Two gets closer, they do less and less of that, like maybe that part of their job phases out. Do you see what I'm saying?
I see just the opposite, really. I would, I see, yeah, I see the major economic development, if you're going to do, in fact, do it, your major economic development project in the next three years will be this downtown project. And as it commences, the work will just begin. And I say that just from what we experienced in Phase One, the simplest, simplest phase.
Well, that's why I said, that they work now, and as the Phase Two starts, they're more concentrated just on that.
On Phase Two?
Yes, it's like a shifting of priorities.
I misunderstood.
They might be, in the first part of the, if they got hired, they might be focusing on meeting with the MBA, meeting with the church, meeting with the Rivermore, et cetera, and saying, here's what the corridor looks like, where do you want the crosswalks, what about benches, statues, lighting, flower pots, all that kind of stuff.
A lot of time is going to have to expend crafting agreements with some private property owners, transformer locations, et cetera. And of course, the church parking, it's not the church, the Rivermore and the church, I guess, parking lot, there's some issues there, are going to take a while probably to resolve.
So maybe it's, if we wanted to proceed with this further, we suggest that Al, and whoever on the council's interested, draft a job description for discussion at the May workshop.
I would move to do that.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, Counselor Glennon, you have a question? Counselor Caprioli makes a motion, Counselor Morrison seconds it, to.
It's okay.
Proceed with the drafting of a job description for the May workshop. Counselor Glennon.
I question why we need to do that, only because I have a memo here dated February 1 of '05, Phase One, let me see, idea for discussion, community and economic developer coordinator, responsibilities of the position, coordinate all economic development in the town of New Market, primarily focusing on the revitalization of the downtown and Route 101 corridor in Black Bear TIF District, serve as a town representative to the Downtown TIF District Committee, the Black Bear TIF District, and the NCDC, and serve as a community liaison and project manager for Phase Two, including communicating to and meeting with the community organization, business property owners, and others regarding the Phase Two construction timeframe, impacts, and costs. So, I mean, we've got it right here.
Maybe.
I guess I wanted it in the form of job description.
On what?
In the form of a job, official job description.
Yeah, I, I mean, that was something I drafted, and it maybe it's a little bit different than that now, because what we just talked about was not including the Black Bear TIF or overall economic development, because that's a different skill set than someone who's going to be meeting one-on-one and coordinating existing work and getting input versus bringing new businesses. Those are totally different skill sets. I'm not sure the same person's going to have it. So, that might be the basis to help guide the drafting of the job description, which would have more particular details, I think.
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead.
At least you probably want to have to take out the Black Bear TIF, because the NCDC, the Downtown TIF, and the business community of the downtown, okay. So, Counselor Caprioli was looking for more of a formal job description, okay. Just to conserve as a guide, though.
Yeah, I think it makes sense. Is there any other questions or comments? Okay, please proceed with the roll call and the decision, and the vote to proceed with the job description on the coordinator position for the May workshop.
Counselor Jerry Hamel.
Aye.
Counselor Caprioli.
Aye.
Counselor Morrison.
Aye.
Counselor Will Hamel.
Aye.
Counselor Glennon.
Aye.
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Counselor Hart.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Water, thank you, Mr. Richmond and Leo, for waiting so long for this agenda item. Leo mentioned to me that the Folletts Brook Committee met, and they'd like us to participate in a site walk, to see the area and better understand the relationship of it to the other activities going on in the area, and the logging and stuff like that. Counselor Foster and I took a walk out there before the last meeting, just to see the remediation work that was done by the forester and logger. So, the question I have, though, Leo, is, would you rather wait till after the election for the new council, or do both? Or have the new councillors that are elected participate?
I don't think it's necessary, I think basically what the Folletts Brook Committee decided is that, well, we have a lot of tasks, once, now that we've looked at what they put in to the state to be done, and we think the sooner we get the council out there to look at these various locations and the tasks that are going to be required, and to possibly start moving, a lot of them can be done before we even receive our wetlands thing, the roads. There's a lot of stumps that have been taken up, that could be removed. We could even consider discussing a location of the wells that have been discussed a little bit on, and this stuff like this could be done before. This is not going to be something that you're going to move a big crew in and get it done fast, I mean, you're going to do a task, and you may have to wait a couple weeks before you can continue it again, you're going to have to, you know, do seeding at some point, you're going to have to do a lot of water drainings, you're going to require, once you drain an area out, you're going to have to wait for it to dry out to do the work, and where the material's going to be gone to in roads, and I think, the sooner the council, at least the Folletts Brook Committee felt that if the council could see, you know, what we're talking about, with these tasks that have been proposed to the wetlands board, and how difficult it will be in some areas, and see whether the council wants to discuss other things that probably could be done, should be done, before we start restoration. Now that the logging is done, and you can see, the area looks a lot different, I don't say it looks a lot better, but it looks a lot different, and it will look a lot better in a few years, once the reforestation starts up again. I mean, when you knock down two, 300 dead trees, you have a mess, which we have there now, and I think items like that should be discussed with the council to see what they, if they want to do anything, or just leave it like that, or whatever.
Okay.
And I think, basically with daylight, it could be done in the evening, rather than take up people's weekends, I mean.
That'd be great.
In an hour, hour and a half, you could walk the site and do it, if that's.
Okay. What date would the council like to do this site walk on? Personally, next Wednesday is not available for myself.
Would you have to do it during the day? Oh, no, you could do it.
Well, Leo's suggesting like six o'clock.
Well, we have, we have a site walk this Saturday on Lang's Lane, can we just?
We would need to post this.
Oh, okay.
So, we posted that one today, I don't think.
We could amend that, because of the 48 hours, all we need.
Yeah, well, 48 hours from, you can put it out at 8:00 AM in the morning. What'd like to, is Saturday available?
Fun.
Saturday morning?
This coming Saturday?
Are you going to go golfing already?
No, I'm going to take, someone did a year for us.
Okay, so Saturday's not available.
What time you getting back?
Flight's at 10.
Yeah, we already have a meeting that morning, so it'd be nice to go boom, boom.
Fun.
We already have a meeting, a site walk that morning for another issue, so, but if you're not going to get back till like noon, I'd rather not break it there.
They could probably change your flight, right?
Well, I guess if you want to do it like 8ish.
That's why we're doing the other one.
Oh.
Six-ish? Six-ish.
So.
Works for me.
Thursdays.
Next Thursday?
That's the day of the next Thursday.
The 28th?
I have a conflict. That's the Heritage Advisory Board meeting.
About Friday, the 29th.
Works for me.
Well.
Yeah, Friday night.
Should be back.
That's going to impact a lot of pizza places.
Going to be.
What?
Saturday.
At least an hour. At least.
I could be back, just going to Manchester, could be back by 10, 11-ish.
Two to seven.
They gotta be there an hour anyways, right? So if the flight's at 10, you're going to drop them off at 8:30?
I don't know if they said 10.
Back by 9:30?
Yeah, that's true.
7:00 AM, all right? 7:00 AM?
Yeah.
Guys are killing me. Now.
What date's down for? Wednesday, the 27th, Tuesday, the 20th, we can't do this at 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock?
I cannot do it next Wednesday, but.
What about Monday?
What about Tuesday? You have already walked it, right?
Yeah, but I, it would be nice to have someone that knows exactly where everything is out there, because.
Yeah, I'll have the maps showing where we are in relation to what's being done, and the extent that.
Okay, how about Tuesday, the 26th?
Good with me.
6:00 PM?
Next Tuesday. All right, next Tuesday it is.
I can't make it, but I don't have to be there, I've been out there.
Yeah, because you're on the committee. All right, 6:00 PM, Tuesday, the 26th. Thank you, Leo.
Tuesday, 6:00 PM.
Okay, the next agenda item is discussion of proposal from.
Where do we meet?
We can meet at Mr. Rousseau, well, let's meet on a.
You can either park right in front of the entrance to Folletts Brook, park several cars right there, you can park at the water treatment plant.
Oh, okay.
Masson Drive. Or you can park in the Rousseau House parking lot and walk around the corner, since we own the building now.
What did he say?
It's a little bit of a walk.
Everybody.
Or the water treatment plant, exactly.
Oh, yeah, the water treatment plant, okay.
There's a lot of room on the side of the road, right?
Sure. Town administrator has something on water.
Yeah, Clay Mitchell had a visitor to his office suggesting there was a potential water source, additional water source on Packers Falls Road, and since the Folletts Brook Committee is working in that area, with council's approval, I could forward this to the chairman, Leo Fillion, and have him follow up on it, if it's okay with the council.
It's just, essentially, it's an inquiry from a landowner as to whether or not the town's interested in exploring their property for a potential water source.
So moved.
All right.
Can we get to know who, or any of that?
If you want to look at the letter, I just don't want to say it out loud. Why don't we just not do it officially and just pass it off, delegate it?
I'll give you a copy of that tomorrow morning, okay?
Just so we don't have to do a formal vote. Item B is discussion of proposal from Wade Farm Condomineum Association to purchase their community water system. For the sake of openness, town administrator lives in Wade Farm, so I'd suggest that you participate from the audience.
Well, I don't want to participate anyway.
Okay. We received a letter from the Condomineum Association a few weeks ago, and it was put in our packets a few weeks ago, and we got a copy of it in this packet as well. And the community, the Condomineum Association authorized Kenneth Nelson, who's a board member, to send this letter. They're, they understand the town is in need of water for, for their water system. They have two wells drilled on site, and the, both are bedrock wells, 362 feet deep and 268 feet, and have combined capacity of 68 gallons per minute. They have a pump house and service equipment, which were replaced in 2000, replaced both pumps, the wiring and related pumping equipment. They have indicated they are proposing to transfer the ownership of the wells and all the buildings, pumps, et cetera, to the town, and they'd also grant rights of access over the wells and any easements across our land. They have put in here a proposed payment of $60,000, which could be spread over a multi-year period. This is a small public water system regulated by the state already. And they're also interested in considering other ways they could help with some of their land, like, maybe for a, a water tank, yeah, thank you. So, I wanted to discuss this with the town council, see if you wanted to pursue this. 68 gallons a minute is not a tremendous amount of water, but it is, over the course of a day, that's 15. of a day, that's fifteen or twenty thousand gallons, I think.
Eighty-six thousand.
Oh, thank you, Jerry.
As long as it can pump it, then.
Yeah, so if we wanted to pursue something like this, we probably want to hire a hydrogeologist or somebody to do a sustained pump test and figure out what kind of water it could actually produce.
The letter says it's potential for other wells?
Yeah. That's what they said. Councilor Glennon?
I've got some concerns here. First of all, Mr. Dixon, how many members are there on this board?
Well, it's not just the board, it's a sixteen-member association and that vote was taken at the association meeting.
And it was approved by all?
Well, all of us in attendance to, yeah, propose and authorize Ken Nelson to handle it.
Okay, but more specifically, how many people were that...
Well, there's sixteen members of the condo association.
Right, but you said they weren't all there?
Well, I don't know if they were all there. I'm just saying, there's sixteen members of the association and everyone present voted to authorize that.
Again, I don't know what the numbers were, however, you are the condo association president.
Yeah, by your fault, yeah.
Okay, so you are that. I guess I gotta ask the question, I mean, I've asked a couple of people around who are engineers, maybe not, you know, engineers in water and everything, but engineers that have a little bit of knowledge of water and their basic comments were sixty-eight gallons per minute is diddly squat. So, what is the condo association using for water? What were they, are they using town water now?
No, they're using the wells. Condo Association uses about five thousand gallons, one of the only bases. Sixteen units, that's usually per cap, the figures from the state and from reading our meters.
What if, how much land is there with the condo association itself?
I believe there's a total of twenty...
Twenty-three acres.
Okay, so would you not want to be looking down the road for if the association wanted to build more condo units?
Yeah.
Why?
It's an open space condominium development. It's never gonna get bigger unless we change the zoning.
Okay.
And the only reason this came up was because it's getting more and more difficult for small units to operate.
Can you get to the speaker, please, so the public can...
The only reason this came up is getting more and more difficult for small public systems to operate. Recently, Shandod Condominiums or Shandod Drive sold their wells to Penachuck. If we had known and been on the market, that might have been something we want to look at because they had much higher producing wells than what was here. But the regulations on these small public units are getting to be just as strenuous as the, you know, larger public units and it's just making it hard for them to do it. So, that's what they're looking at. They're just exploring it. That's about all I can tell you. They also, Mr. Nelson feels that perhaps because there's, he's looked at it quite a bit, that there's a wetland area that comes all the way from Durham, you know, down through Stage Croach Road and through that area and this dumps out in, across the Brook, across Dame Road and down Lamprey Street and in that area, that there's a possibility that more water could be, you know, obtained there. So, that's why they made that offer.
What's the difference between this proposal and a couple of years ago, there was, I believe, Lady Slipper that wanted the town to take over a pumping station or something up there?
The pumping station was for sewage.
For sewage, okay. And we wouldn't do that, so I guess...
Because that doesn't provide us with any benefit.
Right, right. I can see why that, but I guess I'm getting, what I was getting at was spending, well, that's difficult to say that way, so I guess I'll just leave it at that, but I guess I would feel better if we had, from all of the condo association that, you know, everybody's on board of this or had a better feeling of that. When you see, what really concerned me was when I read this and it said, "Board Member", I probably would have felt better and I can understand why you didn't want to, you didn't sign it, yes, I can understand.
No, I not only didn't sign it, man, I have nothing to do with it and Ken Nelson...
Well, you do because you have, you're part of that association.
Well, yes, but I have nothing to do with presenting this or anything and I, you know, I'm not trying to sell this one way or the other. Ken Nelson is the vice president and he was authorized by the association at night to do the communications because I told him I would have, you know, couldn't have anything to do with it.
Again, I think I feel better if I saw all the board members had signed this, such as when the council...
Let's take it at face value because it says, "Under authority" in the first sentence from Wade Farm Condominium Unit Association. So, unless he's lying...
No, unless he's lying.
We should take it at face value that they have the authority. They're not offering us a purchase and sales agreement or a contract. There's gonna have to be a whole bunch of votes they're gonna have to take to proceed. I guess what we need to figure out is whether or not we think it's worth pursuing further. Counselor Jerry Hamel, then Counselor Caprioli.
I guess there is a benefit, you know, having been in a lot of discussions recently on water, the wells that are being suggested by a private landowner for town water usage and what they have to go through to put these wells online. And then also Follets Brook has an existing well and the potential of new wells. These are existing wells and I believe, and I'm sure Al could tell a lot more about it, but I believe you really get a benefit by getting an existing well. You can bypass a lot of the regulations that would affect a brand-new well. And so, looking at it that way, there's definitely a benefit there. You gotta get to these wells, that's another thing, but, you know, we're looking at wells at Follets Brook that are...
It's at sixty-eight gallons a minute, something like that.
And looking at that as a viable source too, you know, but that would have to be possibly treated in the treatment plant with the water from Follets Brook. It may not have to, but that's the way we're looking at it right now. I think, looking at it, an existing well, that there is possibly a big benefit there.
Counselor Caprioli?
I was just going to make a motion to further investigate this proposal. I'm not sure who to direct to do it, the...
I think George Laney.
George Laney?
My suggestion would be to have George discuss with DES the status of this public system, what the permit, if they got, if they got a permit from the state whenever it was built, what the capacity was allowed or any of the permit, whether it was twenty thousand gallons a day they could take out or thirty or whatever. And then what would it, what would we need to do to determine if we could go to eighty-six thousand, right? Is that the number? Maximum capacity, assuming it could sustain that pump rate.
I was figuring it at about sixty gallons a minute if it could pump at that rate for twenty-four hours straight.
Yeah. That's, I mean, that's one ninth of what we use, one eighth, one seventh, maybe, if I do my math right, so. That might be the right person to do that.
Okay, so I'd make a motion to authorize George Laney to further investigate this proposal, contacting, what'd you say, DES and...
Yeah.
Checking into what the wells permitted for and how viable a use it would be for the town.
And the cost of doing the additional work, I guess. Is there a second? Counselor Wolfhamel seconds. Counselor Foster?
The risk of lengthening this discussion, I was thinking, I see Mr. Philion's hand up and I was hoping that maybe he obviously has a...
My question is whether this would be, have to go through permitting processes for municipal water source, which are different requirements than for a community water source. So, I guess, and we've talked to, on board that property and whatever, the permitting costs for a municipal well are quite expensive and also, I guess, we gotta look into the cost, tie into the existing municipal water system. And testing, I guess, has been there, whether testing will be the...
Those are all the issues I would hope that George will look into. Counselor Glennon?
I can see the need to study it further. However, with that being said, why would we not want to have that looked at by Follets Brook's committee, because they're gonna be looking right down the street at another very similar situation, which is looking for additional water supply? Why wouldn't that fall right into the same category as how the Follets Brook's people look at it in conjunction with George Laney?
It's not Follets Brook.
We're just checking out fifty thousand dollars now.
It's also different, I mean, it's a different thing because the Packers Falls landowner doesn't have a well.
But it's still a source of water they're looking at.
But it's a totally different process to...
Mr. Dixon was nodding his head, yes, I mean...
To explore for water is different than to determine if we want to acquire a water source. Let's use the staff for what they're good at.
I just see a conflict there.
What's the conflict?
They work for the town and the town's administrator is involved.
There's no conflict.
I'm just looking at it that way from perhaps what the public might be looking at it.
I think we've been very honest and upfront with how we're doing this and if the public has a problem with the perception that the administrator lives in a place, that we're looking at trying to help the town's situation. I don't think there's any problem.
We're looking at a proposal. We haven't said we're gonna buy it, we haven't said we're gonna pay the price they requested. And if we get to that point, when we make those negotiations, the town administrator won't be involved at all. It'll be a non-public.
On their side.
We'll make the determination, we'll assign the appropriate person, whether it's a town council member, which might be the best choice to actually make those negotiations happen, or hire someone independent of the town to do that on behalf of the town council to avoid any potential conflict. If they're, it just seems, it seems a stretch to suggest that staff are gonna misrepresent the town council.
No, I'm not, I did not say that and I want that to be very clear, Mr. Chairman. You're mixing words here. I simply said, there is an individual who works for the town and the town administrator. I don't want anybody to perceive something's happening, no. And I don't want you to think that's what I'm suggesting. I'm looking, on the other side of the equation, looking in at the council and see if that might be a problem. That's how I was interpreting that.
Well, I guess my response is to suggest that let's not create a problem if there isn't one by suggesting that there might be a problem, which is what you did. Counselor Jerry Hamel, then Counselor Wolfhamel.
I was gonna say, George Laney is definitely the person to bring this to, who's quite knowledgeable on wells, on bringing them online, on if that water needs pre-treatment, he'd even be able to tell us that, you know, and so he's definitely the person to go after for any information leading up to a further decision on these wells, so I don't see why we should stay away from using the staff for those reasons.
Counselor Wolfhamel?
Yeah, we have to remember that. Give some consideration to the word all over town is water. What are we doing about water? It's water. I don't think it's a trickle, but I think we ought to consider this. Thank you.
So, we have a motion from Counselor Caprioli and Counselor Wolfhamel to have the staff, George Laney, evaluate this further with discussion with DES, et cetera. Any further discussion? All right, Helen, would you call the wolf, please?
Yes. Counselor Jerry Hamel?
Aye.
Counselor Caprioli?
Aye.
Counsel Morrison?
Aye.
Counsel Wolfhamel?
Aye.
Counsel Glennon?
Aye.
Counsel Foster?
Aye.
Counsel Hart?
Aye.
Seven-zero.
Thank you. The next agenda item is update on negotiations with the private landowners to acquire groundwater. And this is on the agenda, just to give us a brief update on the status of that, without going into any details, but brief update without going into nitty-gritty details.
Very brief, there's not too many details to go into. Lionel Labonte has retained the services of Lynn Morris, an attorney in Stratum, or Exode. We have conversed. I kind of, in the discussion today, Lionel just said, "Put something together", so he called me, wanted to know if I could work with him putting something together. And I suggested that probably it would be best that he sat down with his client and find out what he wants from this and shape a draft proposal to us that we can then start the work back and forth. And he concluded, yes, that probably would be best and he will be meeting in the next couple of days with Lionel to try to fish out just exactly what is the end objective, everything that Lionel wants to accomplish in this consortium.
So, the key message is that there's still a possibility.
Oh, yes. Lionel Labonte definitely wants to do it. The attorney said that, when he called Monday, that Lionel had put this in his lap and he has been neglectful. In fact, I think it was last Friday Lionel called me and asked me if the attorney had been in touch with me and I said, "No", and Monday morning he was. But, you know, the attorney had more questions than I could answer because I can't, I don't know what Lionel's, you know, yeah, exactly.
Objectives are. Any discussion, questions for town administrator?
The only question I have is, did they reach at some point, they did some testing out there, right, initially?
There again, Dana, that was done years ago and I've heard a lot of...
No, most recently, I heard there was, they're getting into a mixture of some salt water?
Don't know of any testing that's been done out there.
I haven't heard that. I heard that there was some kind of concern.
Did you hear that? Yeah, that's what I...
I heard that there was a comment that you gotta be careful that you don't suck so much water that salt water...
Right, that's...
But it's not happening. If it was, people on other portions of that area would be affected as well and would be saying that...
There's no water being pumped from those wells that I know of.
Yeah, okay, I thought they had done some testing and...
They would have to do, you know, they'd have to do significant tests that DES outlines that, you know, they pump for three days straight.
Just want to clarify.
One thing I can tell you is, and George is gonna be looking into it, that magnesium and iron, I think, in the earlier tests showed up. I don't know how much...
One is too well said, a higher iron quantity...
Yeah. I don't know how much of a problem it is, but you'll see, that might exacerbate yourself when you start pumping, you know, you know.
Clean it out.
And, you know, but anyway Dover is looking at putting in a treatment system for that and he mentioned it was gonna be about three or four million dollars for that. And so, I suggested to, I suggested to George that he try to arrange a meeting and we go over to speak with the people in Dover and see just exactly what that three, four million dollar figure encompasses. I will say one last comment in regard to Wade Farm. The thing that spearheaded this, I guess, is the arsenic rules that are coming out, okay? And again, the difficulty of small systems, you know...
Eight yards, yeah, it's much, much lower.
Yeah, everything, you know, and the testing requirements that are coming up with is, you know, quite burdensome.
Counselor Jerry Hamel?
I'm so upset.
Counselor Foster? I skipped you, sorry.
That's, I just, one, I guess more of a question for, to, the area, obviously, that area where Mr. Labonte's property is, the Black Bear Tiff District, which obviously people have been interested in turning into some sort of economic engine, similar to the downtown. How would wells out there affect the possible development of some of the things such as office parks or what have you that they've spoken about in the past?
It certainly is gonna impact that capability. I don't know exactly what it would, will entail, but it'll encompass an area of about thirteen acres of protected area. Now, we all know that there is the ability for some development in a wellhead area, but it certainly is gonna cause us to rethink and maybe even Lionel to rethink, you know, jeopardize in any way a source of revenue.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. The last agenda item is non-public real estate. You saying goodbye or did you want to add something, Mr. Wolf?
I'd like to say goodbye, but these wells are no good until they're tested. All of you can do what you want, but you've gotta test them first, then it becomes valuable.
Yep.
Till then, it's nothing. What you must do is test them, can't do anything else. They put a new pump in, the sewer will... They put a new pump in the sewer well yesterday, and it needed it.
Thank you, Mr. Wolford.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
In regards to the Wade Farm, I was watching on TV and got out of my pajamas and came down. Regarding the Wade Farm, I know Mr. Dixon recused himself. There's a different fellow that signed the papers?
Yeah.
And Mr. Dixon stated that he could not discuss it in any way. But he's discussing it here, asking, answering questions. And I'm wondering why the gentleman who signed the papers is not here to represent Wade Farm, and I feel Mr. Dixon should completely refrain from discussing this at all, because it is in conflict with that town chatter, I believe.
Well, no, that's not true. To say that he can't discuss it at all is not true. He can't dis... I asked him to sit down, because up here, he has a higher role of authority, just by sitting with us. But as a member of that community and knowledgeable about the well, it's appropriate for him to discuss it. When we, when this agenda item was put on by me, because we got the letter, I, Al said, "Should he come?" And I said, "No, I don't see any reason why this gentleman should come and sit through three hours of the meeting, when all we're gonna do is decide if we want to further investigate." So it was my decision not to have Mr. Kenneth Goldman, or whatever his name is to come, Nelson. So...
I think maybe the public would've been satisfied to make that decision themselves and not just have the chair make that decision as to whether or not that gentleman should be here to speak on behalf of Wade Farm and not Mr. Dixon.
Well, we got a letter from him, we were responding at the first opportunity to do that, so I don't, I don't agree.
I feel entirely regular as to what's going on.
I'm not surprised, so.
And your satirical remarks should be kept to yourself. Conduct yourself as a chair and keep snide remarks to yourself. Brian, thank you.
Ms. Quox, it's well-known that you are not a fan of the town administrator. So when you take this time of approach, there's nothing but to suspect that it's a response to his, you know, your previous disagreements with the town.
I can...
And there's nothing unfair, inappropriate going on here. And that's why you see me react like this, because you're tarnishing, you're suggesting there's tarnish on the whole council, because we're accepting the proposal that came from the Wade Farm Condominium Association. That's not fair.
And Mr. Dixon himself stated that he did not want to comment or take part in this in any way. But he did, and...
That's, if you read the charter, there's nothing inappropriate about somebody on the council discussing an issue. It's voting on it for their penitentiary gain. We didn't get any concrete information about it from him during this discussion. He hasn't swayed us, we're investigating it, that's our responsibility. If you lived in a condominium association, as a planning board representative, and your condominium association proposed this, we would discuss it just as well, so. I don't agree, I'm sorry.
I'd make a motion to go into non-public, RSA 91-A:32D Real Estate.
This is to discuss, what I wanted to say is, this is to discuss the Verizon proposal for the cell tower. Counselor Caprioli?
Aye.